Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board Meeting. Today's the 4th of May. I believe, let's see if Matt Rowland's here yet. I see Chris, I see.
He's coming in now.
Okie dokie. Hi, Matt. Okay, I guess we'll go ahead and get started. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Thank you. Ed, would you like to begin by reading the preamble?
Sure. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020, and March 23rd Order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Town of Southampton Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to or view this meeting while in progress may do so by going to zoom.us/join. Hit "Join a Meeting" in the top right of the screen. Type in the meeting ID 81568860697. Password 738522. Hit "Join." Please be sure to mute your device when joining in. Note to join in the video meeting with cell phone, you will need to download the Zoom app from the App Store. Call and telephone number is 646-558-8656, or by watching Public Access TV Charter Spectrum Channel 191. In-person attendance and public comment at select board meetings will be suspended until further notice. If you email a written public comment before the scheduled Select Board meeting, it'll be read at that Select Board meeting. If you email a written public comment after viewing something at a live televised Select Board meeting, it'll be read at the next Select Board meeting. Please send your public comments via email to selectman@townofsouthampton.org. Please note that all public comments must be within the requirements of the policy on public comments listed in the open time for the public on the Select Board agenda.
All right, thank you very much. I just want to start off this meeting by acknowledging the recent death of Don Puza, who is the owner of Pure Foods. He's been a longstanding business owner in Southampton. He has been a pillar of the community and has been supportive of many of the causes and community events in town, and I just wanted to extend our sincere condolences to Don's family regarding his passing. Would the Finance Committee like to open their meeting?
Yes. I call the meeting of the Finance Committee to order.
Okay.
All members, Rachel is not present. So, four members are present.
Okay.
Rachel will be with us a little bit later on.
Okay, thank you. So, we do have, this is one of our regular Select Board meetings, and so we do have just hopefully some items that we're going to move along very quickly and take care of. If it's okay with you, we just moved a few of them up. Some of them are budget-related, so it's helpful to have them be voted upon, so. Any quick updates, so we can get to the budget, which is again, one of the major reasons why we need to meet. So, we have no public hearings. We have one resignation. Joel has in our ad hoc Technology Committee meeting effective May 26. So, we did get a letter from him in his packet. He's resigning for personal reasons. Could I have a motion to approve his resignation? It sounds like Francine and Chris.
I'll second it, yeah, sure.
Okay, so Francine then Chris. Any comments?
No, I think Joel's hoping that maybe he'll be able to join back on the committee later on, but right now he needs to take a break, so.
Okay. All in favor?
Follows I.
Groden I.
Rowland abstain.
Okay, and I just want to say thank you, Joel, for the service for the Technology Committee. Select Board reports, does anybody have items that are pressing that you want to make sure you mention?
No.
No.
No. Nothing they can't wait.
Yep, same here. Actually, we haven't had any meetings. Council on Agents meeting tomorrow at 4:00, if anybody's interested in joining that meeting. Ad hoc Grants Committee update? Any updates, Chris?
Not really. We're going to be meeting tomorrow, actually, to look at some possibilities of grants, but nothing new. We have still got no guidance about the $100,000 grant we received in terms of how we can spend it or what we have to do to make it official, so we're kind of waiting on that, too.
You're talking about the Trails Grant? I mean, the Greenway?
The original, yes, it was from the small-town grant that we received in the amount of $100,000 to help acquire the rail bed, yes.
Okay. Okay, Town Administrator Report. Ed, is there things you wanted to say?
Everything I have, I can cover under the agenda items.
Okay, moving right along, then. We don't have any other reports. We do have a number of PCFs and PRFs. I'm just going to start with the PCFs. If Francine, as our representative to PQB, you want to just let us know what the PCFs are, please?
Yes, at the April 22nd meeting of the PQB, we approved the increase of minimum salaries in town for the following people to $13.50 an hour. Flo Collins, the volunteer coordinator for the COA, Carol Goulet, Judith Powell, Holland, Cynthia Lucier, and Barbara Thompson, all library substitutes. We also approved the PRF for the Highway Superintendent.
Could we do that separately, please?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Can we just talk about the PCFs? Would someone like to make a motion to approve the PCFs?
So moved.
Okay, so, so the motion then is to have it be retroactive back to January 1, correct?
Correct.
And this is the state minimum wage of $13.50 per hour?
Yes.
So, all the PCFs look okay. They're all signed off by everybody. Any other comments or questions about these five PCFs? Okay, all in favor, then?
Follows I.
And Groden I. Can you talk about the PRF?
Yes, there's a PRF for the Assistant to the Highway Superintendent. Just, and we'll go through it when we see it, but it was capped at for fiscal year '21, should the hire occur before the new fiscal year, capped at $17.81 per hour by the accountant, because that's all that's remaining in the budget for the rest of this year. There was, there was a range that on the, on the, on the PRF of 1169, which no longer exists since we just upped it to 1350 to 2563. And as I mentioned, it was only, it was capped at $17.81 for 25 hours a week based on what's remaining in fiscal year '21 budget.
So, was this a position that was recently vacated?
It's the position, it was, oh my, I think it was vacated in September, October. It's been vacant for a while.
Okay.
The PRF has gone back and forth several times.
Right.
Okay.
And I think it was, I think it was actually December, and this should, and this one should actually be conditional upon approval of the Finance Committee, because they have it scheduled at their next meeting.
Okay, so is this position posted right now? I'm just wondering, like, if this was December, why are we getting it now?
Oh, it has been submitted, and there were around the, you know, the salary range and everything went back and forth a few times.
Yeah, this is the second rendition of it.
Yes.
So, what changed?
I believe the salary range changed, and and the position was rescored.
Did the job description change?
The job description did, from the looks of things, and I'm reading it, no, the job description did not change. The position was rescored to a grade level eight. I don't know what the previous, I don't have the previous one, what it was originally, but it did go to an eight. What I find on the document here is that it shows the date of April 1st, 2021, which is the date that that it, that the PQB approved it or was submitted to the PQB, but the original job description was approved in September of 2018. So, I'm not, I'm not sure why there are two dates on this job description. We'll need to find out.
So, the job description didn't change, but the PQB rescored it and increased the rate of it without any job changes?
We, no, we didn't increase, I mean, the rate was set close to what the prior employee had, was making. And that's what it was capped at by the accountant for reasons of that's what's remaining in the budget. We didn't do anything about fiscal year '22. This is posting for this year.
Well, since when do you hire somebody and say you can't make more than this amount, even though the range goes up from there because isn't enough money in the budget this year? That doesn't make any sense to me, nor does changing the grade of it, when you don't change a single job responsibility. Well, okay, I mean, if
I will.
I can't support, I can't support this, especially unless the Finance Committee takes a look at it first, because to me, it just doesn't sit right with me. We have two different dates on the job description. We have a ceiling on the position for this year, because we don't have the money. That makes no sense. The job description wasn't changed, but the scoring was changed. I don't know, there's a lot of things about it that I just don't feel comfortable about approving, frankly.
Oh, I, I'm reading the note on here, and I don't take it as a cap. It says, "Please note that any rate over $17.81 an hour for 25 hours a week will be an increase for fiscal year '22 over what the fiscal year '21 budget is." So, I don't read that as a cap.
I mean, if I had a really good candidate, and it was within the range, and the person had a lot of experience, and felt like I wanted to hire them at that rate, then that shouldn't stop me if that's within the range of the job.
Well, the range is up to, is, as I said to you, it will be from $13.50 to $25.63.
Did that change? You said it was within the same range. Did this change when the grade was increased?
I believe from the original PRF, we saw, yes, it changed. That one, that one was going up to, I believe, almost $35 an hour. This is capping it at the range at 2563.
Okay. Do we know what the previous person was paid? Is, it wasn't $17.81, was it?
It was in that vicinity, 1749, 1781, somewhere in there.
Okay.
And that's what was budgeted, and that was why she put the note on it, that the accountant that she did.
So, what was the reason for rescoring the position?
The request of the department head.
Then why wasn't there a change in the job duties, then?
Well, this is something we really, among the members of the PQB, really need to address. And I'm, I'm, I'm not supportive of us doing things without, without there being some additional duties or some change, not additional duties, but some change in the job description, and we went ahead and we did it. And we need to go back and revisit it. I'm going to ask that we go back and revisit our decision to do that, not just for this position, but for others. But, you know, I'm one, I'm one member of the Committee.
Okay, all righty. So, we have a PRF that's conditional upon Finance Committee review and sign off on, and an increase in the grade level, and therefore, range of pay. What other comments or questions does anybody have?
Is there a reason that we have to work on this tonight? Can't we wait until the Finance Committee reviews it?
You can remove your motion and redo a motion if you'd like. Francine?
Yeah, I, I wasn't making a motion. I was just giving the, you know, reporting on, on the document.
Somebody said so moved, and then we do have a motion on the table, right?
Oh, I might have said that. I, I will withdraw that if you'd like.
Okay, all right. So, who would like to make another motion, then? Want to make a motion that we table this and let the Finance Committee address it?
Our move that we let the Finance Committee address it and table it until our next meeting.
Is there a second? Matt? Yeah, okay. Matt, are you on mute or something? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Matt's on mute. But it sounds like you're seconding it. All right. Chris and Matt then made the motion and seconded it. All in favor?
Tushman I.
Follows I.
Groden I.
Rowland I.
Okay, we have minutes to approve. We passed over them last time. It'd be good to keep the minutes going. Did everybody get a chance to look at the April 6 minutes?
Yes.
Any edits, questions? As usual, they're very detailed and well-done. Would someone like to make a motion to approve them?
I move that we go ahead and approve the minutes for April 6.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion, questions? All in favor?
Tushman I.
Follows I.
Rowland I.
Okay, moving right along. We have a number of old business. Just looking at the list, the Assistant, any updates, Ed, that you want to mention about the accountant situation?
No, we're still working through that, and we have talked to a person about some ideas to bring in us, an Assistant Town Accountant, in addition to what's out on being advertised, and indeed, but we're still going through that process.
Okay. Any updates on the East Street Bridge? Did you hear back from Mass Works?
They're still conferring on that. It looks, it looks relatively good from the comments that we've had back from them for an extension for our grant, and the, let's see, it's Tuesday, the advertisement for the bid for the East Street Bridge will be in the Central Register and the Daily Hampshire Gazette this Thursday.
Excellent. And then it has to be open for bid for 60 days?
Uh, not 60, and I should have brought that and with me, my memory is we have a pre-bid conference, I think it's May 20th, and we'll be getting the bids back, and I believe it's towards the beginning of June, but I'll check on that date and let you know.
Okay.
I know, I know it's aligned with, if you follow the two-week schedule, one of the Select Board meetings in June, so we can open them, we can get them in that day and open them that meeting.
Excellent. Okay, well, that's good. And the other bridge, they're probably going to be starting on any day now, right?
It seems that way. They have put up their erosion control. So, now that that is up, they will be meeting with the Conservation Meeting on a site visit, and then they will be starting once they do that.
Okay, that's the, that's the bridge to take the water pipe out of the river and put it underneath the bridge. That's the.
Right on Route 10.
Yep, Route 10. Okay, does anybody have any questions about Ed's report on the bridges? How about the bylaw or amendment review? We had asked for, I think, a certain amount of money be freed up to review bylaws. Is there any update on what they're able to do so far?
I will, I will check with Michelle. She had gotten through three of them and was going to get some more done. So, I will see where she is in that and get an estimate of how far she'll be, so we know how many spots, her slots in the warrant will be needed.
Okay, and that has to be updated by the time the deadline is for the warrant, which is basically Thursday, right?
Well, no, we know that we're going to have the bylaws come back and be put on here, so the deadline to have it in the warrant and signed is May 18th.
Okay, and is that the same for the Amendment to the Wetlands Protection Bylaw?
Yes, and they have sent that back to me, so I will be working to put that into the warrant as well.
Any questions about the bylaws? Okay, short-term, long-term disability. We had a proposal. We heard that it's basically, I think it's one of the things that's on the, in the yellow, or in the blue, rather, on the budget. So, I guess we'll talk about that as part of the budget tonight, but we, that's still yet to be decided whether we're going to be able to sign off on a short-term, long-term disability by a carrier as opposed to the town self-insured. Okay, that's it for old business. The new business then is Wage Scale Matrix. Who would like to talk about that?
I guess we need to be clear on what we're calling what? The Wage Scale Matrix, are you referring to the compensation classic, classification system study that are put together? Or are you talking, or do you mean the scale of steps and grades that the PBV updated and was in our last packet?
Well, Ed, let's, let's, let me ask you this, Ed. Should we talk about this as part of the budget? Last time, we talked about supporting, getting anybody below the lowest range up to a range of current, at least above the minimum range for the position, and that anybody that was low in the range, 10% or lower, we would, again, try to at least do something to offset some of the wages in town. And so, that information has been worked through and checked several times, and Francine has a chart and provided it to Matt, and we can either talk about it separately, or we can talk about it as part of the budget.
Talk about it as part of, as part of the budget.
Okay, let's do that. Any COVID-19 updates?
Uh, no.
Okay. I don't know if there's a big change from where we were before. We did not have our meeting today, which we usually do. What I do know is that I got an email, because I volunteered to give shots. 3,500 vaccines were freed up for the Northampton Senior Center. So, there are plenty of vaccines available through Northampton. So, if you know anybody 16 or older that would like to get a vaccine, please encourage them to go online and get a vaccine. Are there any updates from the state, Ed, on where we are with the COVID for the Town of Southampton?
We are back in the gray as of last Thursday.
Yep, good. We're all afraid about a spike with the post-school vacation, but so far, so good.
So far, so good. So, we'll see what happens next week, which will be about two weeks out.
Okay, and we did, you know, generally, the fire and police have been healthy, and PPE is in good supply, and they have a nice new sign out in front of the fire department. Our EMD was deployed to Washington DC on a federal deployment, so he has notified John Workman to sort of be in his place while he's gone. And that's probably it. Does anybody have any other COVID updates? Please get vaccinated if you can. How about CARES Act?
No, we're still, still in our, shall we say, transitional period, and we have till June 30th to either request any additional access to funds that weren't originally approved, that were eligible for, or to transfer any requests that were approved that we are not going to utilize into another source or for another use.
I did also read that the FEMA is now reimbursing 100% instead of 75%. How much dollars does that free up? Do you know, for Chris or Ed?
I don't know that figure.
Okay, are you folks meeting for the Grant Committee tomorrow?
Yes, we are.
I wonder if that, if you might be willing to have a discussion a little bit about the CARES Act. I don't know if that 25% that we had counted on being not covered could now be utilized between now and June 30th towards additional expenses?
Yeah, I think we can, we can look at that, or certainly, Ed and I can take a look at that in more detail. I have spent time going through the reports since last July, when we first started reporting on a lot of the COVID expenses in town, and matching that against the COVID monies that were allocated to each department, so I'm about through with that. And I figured, once, once we got through Budget Week here, I was going to try and just touch base with Ed and the department heads, just to verify my numbers, just to show what they've actually spent, and how much might be left, and what they were originally allocated at the department level. So, I'm hoping that maybe next week we might have a chance to look at that in a little bit more detail.
That would be great. Anything else, Ed, on that?
No, that should cover it.
Okay. The American Rescue Act, there was another, the Beacon Magazine had an article about the American Rescue Act with some links. The frustrating thing is, like, money's coming very, very soon. We don't know what you can use it for, and we don't know how much.
Yeah.
That has been frustrating. Probably, the light is getting closer at the end of the tunnel, because originally, when that was approved, the Treasury Department, the Federal Treasury Department had 60 days to release the rules and regulations for it to be used, and that 60 days is coming up on May 10th, so, one way or the other, we should have some word next week.
Yeah, that's what I hear. That would be nice. So, we have all now the discussion around the budget, but I do want to let people know that there are two other items of business that can't wait until the next meeting, and we don't have to talk about them now. I just want to let everybody know that, once we're done with this, the articles and the budget, that there are two issues that we have to talk about. One is the trees. We heard that there are three trees that are on town property in the Manhan Meadows Conservation Area that are risk to neighbors, and that's a $5,000 charge. I don't know if that includes police detail or not, but that's something that we have to discuss. The Conservation Commission did kind of approve that being done, but there's no discussion about the funding. And the other one is the Franklin Regional Council of Governments has an issue that we have to talk about, and that was just, the information was just. And that was just sent, the information was just sent out this afternoon to the select board about both of those things, so let's just remember that we have to cover those things before the end. So let's talk about the revenue and expense that is a placeholder on the budget. Are there updates on either of those?
Not since the last meeting.
Okay, I wanted to ask a question about revenue that I've been talking, thinking about. It seems that you are very confident on the revenue numbers, and the budget has been approved by the state. And you feel pretty confident that it's, if it varies at all, it's going to be a very small window. So I just wanted to get assurances that, that what we are working with, you have a lot of confidence in, in terms of the number.
I have a good deal of confidence in that number. I have one thing that I am checking on that just arose that we may have to adjust our overlay number. And if we have to adjust our overlay number up, that will actually make the revenues that are available for the operating budget less. So I am checking with the Department of Local Services, of the DOR, on what their opinion is if we are okay with the hundred thousand dollars we've been using for the last few years, or if we need to shift that up a bit for fiscal year twenty-two.
Okay, and do you expect to have that, like, really soon?
I'm hoping to have that tomorrow.
Okay, all right, so we'll work with the revenue number that we currently have. So next, we're going to talk about the operating budget. And let Ed and Matt perhaps lead that discussion. Where would, where did we leave it last time? We left it with a column over budget. And we also have a column of potential funding subject to an override, so what would the select board and finance committee like? How, where would you like to start on this?
Well, has there been any progress in, in addressing the, the ex, you know, the, the deficit? From what, from our last meeting?
By whom?
By the, whomever, the department heads.
Right, we, we got a release on, on, at five thirty.
Right.
There don't seem, there don't seem to be any changes.
Yes, that, that, there were, from the departments I heard back on, I have filled in that tab one and a half that Matt created. Matt, do you want to put up the spreadsheet, please?
Sure.
Well, Ed, you want to just walk us through a little bit about your new, the tab one and a half there?
Certainly. As, you know, Matt had added, added this tab one and a half and come up with some calculations to go back to the departments and give them a target for some reductions, so we can go through that with what I have heard back from those departments, and I can go over what we have, we haven't haven't heard back from, or actually maybe in areas that we may not get any feedback from, so.
Could I just start, could I just start, and maybe Matt, you could do this better than I can. Just, you know, remind us, so we started with this budget, this, you know, we were over, we were originally over, I think, forty-eight, fifty thousand dollars on the municipal side after we had the bidding percentage updates in there, and then the schools request came in at a, with a pretty high amount. And so we had a budget amount that was a deficit. So then we looked at the percent of the budget by each department and allocated a reduction. First of all, did we do an increase by two and a half?
We did.
With, but with contractual increases in addition to the two and a half?
No, we just did pragmatically a two and a half percent increase over that department's budget from previous
That did not include any contractual increases, so for example, if the contractual increases exceeded two and a half, we still kept it at two and a half of the previous year. And then, and then we added in the priorities that we had identified, some technology equipment, some of the wages. And then we looked at what the deficit was, divided by the percentage of the budget that was carried by each department, applied those reductions, and then asked them, what was the directive to the department heads?
To find the number of the total of the page, to fill it in, fill lines above, because they're the masters of their.
Okay, so the number, they, they had a target number that was based on their percentage of the overage as a percentage of the budget after they had already gotten a two and a half percent increase in their budget. Okay, so now, if you wouldn't mind, just kind of letting us know, starting with general government.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I scanned through this briefly, I mean, we got to fill in, we got to fill in some of these numbers, and you know, the because just some of them, some of them are left out. So, I mean, Ed, this is your department, so I guess maybe we can, we can go through this, you know, I we got to fill in the rest of this column, so that we can arrive at the total and see how it compares to the total that we set out for. Right, exactly. Selectman expenses are reduced from fifteen hundred to fourteen hundred dollars. The web pay maintenance, I reduced it a little bit from twenty-one sixty to twenty-one ten. The employment advertising, I dropped a hundred dollars from five hundred to four hundred dollars. The administrative expenses, I dropped two hundred dollars from eleven hundred to nine hundred. And then the next one up would be finance committee expenses falls under the finance committee. So I didn't touch that. The lowest that could go would be a hundred and eighty dollars, which is there dues to the Finance Association. So I, I didn't touch it from there. The reserve fund, you would as earmarked, hopefully funded at, you know, five thousand dollars. You know, whether that's done here in tab one, one and a half, or in the request that gets us to an override number, that's up to the select board. I dropped the town accountant salary since the position was open about I think it was five hundred and forty dollars from fifty thousand forty to forty-nine thousand five hundred. Let's say. Independent audit is contractual. Town accountant expenses, I dropped a hundred dollars from a thousand to nine hundred, that had already been dropped, five hundred and sixty-five dollars the previous year. Or for this year from the previous year. Let's say, principal assessor came back and dropped the assessors cyclical inspections from twenty-two forty-seven to eleven hundred and eighty-five dollars. Let's see, the treasurer collectors accounts, the treasurer collector is out on leave right now. The target for that area was nineteen hundred and sixty-nine dollars. The town clerk came back and dropped election and registration wages, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars, and election registration expenses, five hundred dollars. Conservation is open. I don't have jurisdiction over conservation. And let's say Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is done on a per capita basis, so that is the amount. Peg programming actually flows from what we get in from and matches our, our revenues from, estimated revenues from charter, so it's a, it's a pass through. Sixty-eight thousand looks to be very accurate again for twenty-two. Let's say. All right, well, should we just plug in these numbers that we don't have and see where the total is and work from there?
You could.
I mean, we, we have these numbers, Francine, you have these numbers, right? These ones in red.
Yeah. The one, the same ones I sent you, I also said to Ed.
Can you read them to me?
Okay. We're talking about the admin, the admin for the
Assessor.
Assessor. It was an increase of five hundred and seventy dollars.
You have the total.
You want the yearly income would be nine thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars and two cents.
Okay, and then what is the new number for treasurer collector wages, given that that encompasses the admin?
I, I didn't do the, I didn't add the full, I just, I just calculated what the difference would be and, and figured that the formula would be calculating all of that.
Wouldn't it be tab one plus the difference then?
Yeah, yes, it would.
So you want to just give them the difference, and you can add it to fifty-one, five eighty-four oh seven?
The difference is five seventy oh two, five hundred and seventy dollars and two cents.
Yeah, wouldn't that be? Hey, correct me if I'm wrong, that would be where we presently are, correct? The FY twenty-one budget.
I would, the next line over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, let me go take a look. I might have that number. So, go ahead and, go ahead and move along, and let me check. Town clerk assistant wages?
It was increased to six hundred and ten dollars and seventy-four cents. You want the new total?
Yeah.
Fifteen thousand nine hundred twenty-six dollars and twenty-two cents.
Say that again?
Fifteen thousand nine twenty-six twenty-two.
That was an increase of what? That doesn't look.
An increase of six hundred and ten dollars and seventy-four cents.
Yeah, look at the first one. It's, it's fifteen, three, one, five.
That's the first.
Why is, why is the, why is it eleven, six, forty-eight? I don't, what's the difference here?
The approved budget's eleven, six, forty-eight from last year.
Right, but aren't we going off of tab one?
Yeah, we are.
So that should be added to the eleven, eight, eighty-one, right? That's only six hundred dollars. It wouldn't take it to fifty-nine.
No, that wouldn't be right.
According to what we have, the current yearly income is fifteen thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-eight cents. You add six hundred and ten dollars and seventy-four cents to that, you get fifteen thousand nine hundred twenty-six dollars and twenty-two cents.
Well, where did?
Why is the FY twenty-one budget approved eleven thousand something?
Just wait for Ed to get back. He might have.
All right, let's skip over that one, too. Let's keep going down.
We did, I think we did that because she started in the fall.
That, that was it. It was not approved. There was a vacancy for a period of time that wasn't filled. This puts it back to what was the original schedule of eighteen hours a week.
Okay, can you confirm then that your figures are fifteen, nine, two, six, twenty-two?
That's what I'm saying it is.
All right, well, that makes sense. That explains it then.
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
And I think that's it, aside from treasurer collector wages, which we need.
Why isn't that separated out like the rest of them?
It, we discussed this before, it's, it's, I don't know why, but it's, it's commingled.
Okay.
But we did, we did that before, so.
And as an advocate for Concom, I'm certainly going to recommend that we put the five thousand expenses back in for Conservation Commission.
I'm just going to look at the total before we do any of that, if, if that's fine.
Was it taken out, Chris?
Yeah. Well, it's not been commented on. I don't know if, it was not brought up at Concom last night, so I'm not sure that they realized that they needed to do something.
Francine, what was the increase for the admin assistant over, assessor admin assistant for the year? Was it?
The increase is five hundred seventy dollars and two cents.
Is that bigger, right, Matt?
Well, well, no, that's why, that's why I don't think, I think Francine did, did did the correct calculations off off of the basis and off of the rates, because the, the, you know, the five hundred and seventy dollars and two cents isn't the difference between any of these numbers. If that makes sense, like.
I think you got it right from payroll.
That's what I think, too.
When I, subtract, what is, Matt, you don't have the spreadsheet there. But anyway, I, when I subtract, what was the income for fiscal year twenty-one, add in the increase, it comes out to the figure that I gave you, nine thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars and two cents.
Yeah, the the admin assistant must have, must have had a different starting starting, start point as well, because this, you know, the, we approved a budget with seven thousand three twenty.
Yes, the, yes, the admin assistant and, and the town assistant to the town clerk was the same person who left and created that vacancy. And they, they replaced it at somewhere down the line, but it was, this is what, it's like, what, twelve months of work.
Yeah, that's not, that was not a twelve month budget there that you're reflecting, right?
Okay, so we just have to confirm those, and then it looks like there was a concession on, at least for the original budget, on the technology, equipment, and services with a higher number for a potential override amount. So we just have to, we just have to fill in those figures and be clear about those ones before we can add those up. Do you want to go to the next column while we wait?
Sure, I can. I mean, and I know we're waiting for Ed. I'm just like, not sure why these numbers weren't carried over.
Oh, huh.
You know. Thankfully. Well, I mean, I can carry this over because the well, no. Yeah, I could carry this over because it's the same. And then here.
Well, that's just the difference of the two percent.
This right here.
Oh, maybe not, maybe not. Maybe it's two and a half.
Well, this is, this is the contractual increase column. I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to arrive at.
Right, 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 I get it.
You know, and like, this is all the same, so I'm just not sure why I didn't carry these over.
Maybe he was waiting to see if there were additional cuts that anybody wanted to make.
Well, he said something about not having jurisdiction over certain things, right?
Right.
Ed, we have a couple of gaps in the, we just want to confirm the numbers if you have them. Ed, we have a couple of gaps in the, we just want to confirm the numbers if you have them.
Yeah, I do have the number for the treasurer collector wages.
Okay, what is it?
Under tab one and a half, for what you're doing, should be fifty-nine thousand. Five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and three cents.
And then, Ed, I just copied over tab one for treasurer collector salary. Which includes, which is encompassing a two percent increase. From last year.
Okay.
And I carried over treasurer collector expenses from tab one.
So one of the, one of the positions on the treasurer collector wages was one of the additional increases, was that accommodated into that fifty-nine, five, sixty-eight oh three?
We didn't talk about assistant treasurer collector yet.
Well, it's included.
That's including that number though Francine, it's a commingled number.
I understand.
Yeah, actually. Were we looking at both of those positions or just one?
Just one.
Okay, which one?
Assistant. Assistant treasurer collector.
Yeah, the assistant treasurer collector.
Okay, so that number then should be.
Well, Francie, why don't you just tell Ed what you computed it to be?
Okay, it came out to be an increase of one thousand two hundred twenty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents. For a total for that position of thirty-one thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars and forty-five cents.
What'd you have?
Okay, the increase.
No, what, what was your final figure?
Thirty-one, nine fifty-nine, forty-five.
Right, which would bring that particular line with the other position in it to fifty-nine, oh, thirty-five point five nine.
Okay.
Okay, so all of them, you want to add them up, Matt?
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to make sure that I got them on. So we are over. By quite a bit.
Okay.
Almost fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah. Oh, I do not have reserve fund money in there, I do not have open space, yeah.
How can we be, how can we be that much over when we were only eleven thousand?
The target's eleven, seven sixty-seven, correct?
We didn't increase anything.
No, this is. Eleven sixty-seven's a deficit, isn't it?
Yeah.
But that, that was the target number that was given.
No, the target number that was given is right here, which has been sitting here the whole time, six eighty-one. Right, we're at six ninety-six right now. Got to get to six eighty-one here.
But what's the eleven, seven sixty-seven?
That is the, that is the amount of the shared remaining deficit, remember how we broke that up proportionally? So after we did the exercise where the six ninety-three is two and a half percent increase off of last year's budget, I mean, we just did this in a regimented fashion. Six hundred and ninety-three grand is two and a half percent more than the current year's budget that we're in, which is six seventy-six. Plus two and a half gets you to six ninety-three, we did that to eight departments, I believe, and those numbers are reported here. And then the number under here is the amount that you need to subtract from that number. Because remember, when we did this exercise and we increased every department by two and a half, we were still short by about a hundred and fifty-three grand, and so to split that up. We took the percentage of those eight departments in terms of their collective budget and the percentage of it, and we did that, and that's how we got rid of the rest of the deficit. And so this is, this is general government's shared or proportional reduction required to arrive at a balanced budget. And so public safety's got an additional amount of thirty-two, schools got an additional amount of, I mean, I wrote it down, but. You can do the math here, but I mean, there's. The difference between these two, so it's equals this.
Let's, let's go back onto general government, please.
Yeah. That we arrived at, we've got to get to six eighty-one if we want this to balance.
Right, but what you're showing now, Matt is.
But that eleven, seven sixty-seven point thirteen is the number deducted from the six ninety-three to get to the six eighty-one, correct?
You got it, yep.
Yes.
Okay, well, we've, we've basically, other than the nineteen sixty-nine that would have been left over from either treasurer collector's office or somewhere else. There's already. Like nine thousand and some odd dollars in reductions, reductions there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So how can we still be fifteen thousand over?
That, that total doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, and we only added in twenty, about twenty-three hundred dollars with the increases we discussed.
Well, I mean, this number is up, this number's up, I mean, I can, you want me to show you where the differences are?
It's not.
It's not up. The tab one five, that was a hundred less right there in the first one, right?
All of these numbers are referenced off of our approved budget for this year, which is a six seventy-six, we're twenty thousand dollars higher than that. But we need to get to six eighty-one. So I can tell you that between our approved budget this year and one point five, we are almost exactly twenty thousand dollars more.
But Matt, if you look at the two yellow lines right there, there's a three thousand deduction right there. And so.
This year's budget, though. Those, so I don't care what's going on over here. This, this, this column is not a reference point for anything, this column is, we're not even using it, honestly, this is the column that we're operating under this year. And, and, and to do this exercise, we're two and a half percent more than this column.
Yeah.
And we are still a hundred and fifty grand short when we do that exercise, we did this out like, I'm, I'm sorry, if, if, if we just needed a summary, I'm happy to do it, but. We took a pragmatic approach and a transparent and fair approach to this, but you got to base the numbers off of your current year, which is F Y twenty-one budget approved, this column is completely irrelevant. This column doesn't balance at all, it's not even close. So why would we use it? This number's seven hundred thousand, it's even further off, you got to go off of what you have, two and a half percent more, that's still put us over. And then we further reduced it proportionally by department, percent on a percentage basis. Like literally very specific percentage, so like no range of percentage is very specific, so we've got to get to six eighty-one in this column, assuming that we want to be fair throughout this. Fair. Percentage fair, not.
Yeah. So you've already added up all of your, all of those columns, and that's what you get, right?
Yeah, because it's the sum of everything above, which is everything highlighted, so it's, it's, yeah.
Can, can I, can I just ask if there's anyone from finance that wants to chime in here in terms of? An opinion, a suggestion?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mary.
Hi, Mary Seriak from the Finance Committee, on the emergency management stipend, I see that six thousand dollars is included in the tab one and a half. That wasn't part of this fiscal year, and I know he's being paid through the CARES Act, so I'm just wondering why we're showing six thousand now being paid out of the general fund?
It was six months.
Well, because we, we anticipate continuing on with an emergency management director amount in the budget. And we're not counting on it being grant funded.
So we're no longer going to look for a volunteer, we're going to actually have it as a paid physician?
Yes.
Thank you.
So Matt, while you're adding in the figures, why don't you put the open space five hundred back in there, so we know how much more is really there? That's the only one you didn't put back in.
With all due respect, it wasn't in the F Y twenty budget, why would I throw it in there? That's an override number as far as I'm concerned. Not adding services here.
Okay, I thought it had been in the original budget, tab one, okay, you're right.
Okay, so our total is six ninety-six, and what we want to get to is six eighty-one, so we're talking about a deficit in this category of about fifteen thousand.
Yes.
Can you put that number down the bottom and let's just keep going on and see where we are at the end?
Okay, okay.
Can you put, can you put the amount there of the deficit, Matt?
Yeah.
You're all gonna come up short then, because that was my misunderstanding, because I used that eleven, seven sixty-seven thirteen and whatever is in the other columns as the target for the cuts that I, that I gave direction to.
Well, okay, well, what was your reference number? Because I can't see where eleven thousand dollars is less than, I mean, thi- this column that is, it's six ninety-six, would eleven thousand less than that is? Six eighty-five, I don't see that anywhere on this sheet. Oh, no, I'm sorry, six ninety-three, six ninety-three is eleven less than, I mean, I don't know, we're, we're eleven less than what?
We just went through all the different cuts, I mean, there were no increases, they were all cuts, but it wasn't enough.
Where the six ninety-six, five oh seven was, there was nothing, so both here, eleven, seven, eleven, seventy, eleven, six, sixty-seven, thirteen. And the columns below it, and then the summation at the bottom all concur with those numbers, so when I did the directions to send out to get to a balanced budget. Those were the figures that I used.
Okay, I mean, this, this number right here, the six eighty-one was sitting in the spreadsheet, it was just right below the sum total, because that's the number that needs to be achieved, and I figured that this would be the final number that we arrived.
Okay, this category is fourteen thousand and five, five hundred dollars off, let's go on to the public safety then.
I'm sorry, hold on. So this is at. This is eighteen over.
So they had made some cuts, though, obviously.
In comparison, yeah, they cut. Well.
They cut thirty-two, six forty-three, seventy-three.
Okay.
Did you say that they did cut that amount?
Yes, but they cut it off of tab one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because that's what they would have been working with.
Okay, you want to keep going for now?
You know, I'm not really sure what to do then here, I mean, if we're all working off of tab one, and I can, then should I, what should I put in for the school here? Tab one, minus the amount that the school's got to reduce, which is all the way down here. They got to reduce eighty-three, six twenty-eight off of tab one. I mean, we're gonna be, we're gonna be like five hundred grand, by that math, we'll be five hundred grand off, again.
Yeah, I, I thought you had already done that when what you had already plugged into tab one and a half.
And I'm sorry to be frustrated, but I provided this number, I'm not sure, it was in, it was in orange, it was sitting at the bottom of the spreadsheet, I'm just not sure how it didn't stare. I, I'm just not sure how it was interpreted, I guess, like, I mean, I, I don't know, whatever.
What's, 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 what's the difference between six ninety-three, seven fifty-six, eighty-nine, and six eighty-one, nine eighty-nine, seventy-six?
If I take this number and I subtract this number, I arrive at six eighty-one, nine eighty-nine, seventy-six, which is the number that we need to hit here in general government, we also need to hit this number right here. We, we need to hit this number right here for school, we need to hit this number right here, I mean, I haven't touched anything down here, so public works, this is literally the spreadsheet I, I, we provided. This column was blank, and the only thing was sitting there was this number. And now, like, I feel like we're just starting from scratch here, I mean, this is eight, this is eight forty-three.
What's the difference between eight eighty-six, five fifty-eight, eleven, and the eight seventy-one, five twenty, seventy-eight?
Where are we?
Public Works, Public Works.
It was down below, yeah.
Eight eighty-six. Equals, it's gonna be eight seventy-one, twenty, minus this.
No, would you please subtract, would you take the eight eighty-six, five sixty-eight, eleven, and subtract the eight seventy-one, five twenty, seventy-eight from it, please?
Why would I do that?
Would you just please do it for me?
That's what you just did, that's what you just did, Matt.
No, it's not what he just did.
Eight eighty-six and eight seventy-one is fifteen.
Yeah.
See what I'm saying? Those two numbers now match.
Right. Yes, but that's, so look. I'm sorry, go ahead, Matt. I, I don't even know where to begin, like, so this number is fifteen thousand dollars less than this number. But this is the number we've got to hit here, the eight seventy-one, so I mean, we can play around with how the fifteen thousand fits into all these numbers, but at the end of the day, it is subtracted from this number to arrive at eight seventy-one. This basis number is based off of this year's budget with a two and a half percent increase, this year's budget is right here in column E. There is nothing referenced off of the ask budget, which is considered tab one, there's nothing referenced off of that, so like. You know, if I subtract eight seventy-one, or however you want to do it, eight eighty-six from eight seventy-one, I arrive at a difference of fifteen thousand, yes. But I got to hit eight seventy-one, I can't hit eight eighty-six, I can't hit fifteen thousand less than eight ninety. Because fifteen thousand less than eight ninety is not eight seventy-one, and it's also not eight eighty-six, there's no reference.
Haven't you been asking people to reduce the budget by the number in the bottom, the fifteen thousand?
That's what I did.
Yeah, okay, well, that's where we, that's, that's, that's what happened, so we are where we are, that's just what we needed, we need, we needed to hit the total that was in the, in the columns of one point five. The math was there, and, you know, if I delete the spreadsheet and just reopen it, the, the, the only thing that was in tab one point five was this orange total. Right here, like, in this case, one point eight nine one million was the total needed to hit above on all the lines. And in general government, you needed to hit a total of six eighty-one, that was the number that was reported in one point five, and we needed to align the numbers above it to that total.
So let me just ask you something, Matt, if, if, if the total came to six eighty-one, nine eighty-nine, and the target to reduce it was eleven, seven sixty-seven, thirteen. That was what the, that was what the directive was, right? To try to get to six eighty-one, so you're reducing six ninety-three.
Guys, let me just summarize this to make this super easy, and I'm gonna. I'm gonna actually bring up what I sent, so that that way, this is crystal clear, because I feel like this is getting, that you all are confusing this because of the numbers that are on the page, and I don't want to delete. Our work. That we've done, but I need to just show you. What we sent. And you all see this? This is what was sent over to Ed, to be sent to the department, so we created tab one point five, it was entirely blank.
No, you're sharing the old one, Matt.
One five, you've got this total here of six eighty-one, nine eighty-nine.
Matt, you can only share one document at a time.
Great, so I will share this, hold on. Right here. I thought you were sharing my screen, so this is the file I sent over to Ed, this is how we finished our select board meeting last, created column one point five, entirely blank. And we created a total at the bottom, which in this case for general gov is six eighty-one, nine eighty-nine. This is what was sent out, this is in all of your email boxes, this is where we ended our meeting. To summarize, the six eighty-one, nine eighty-nine is arrived at in the following way, this is for every department. This is for every department that's in orange. We took this present year's budget, let's call it FY twenty-one, because that's what it's called, that's the numbers we have today. In this case, for this department, it's six hundred and seventy-six thousand and change. We added two point five percent to that number, which is right here, six hundred and seventy-six thousand and change times one point zero two five, which is representative of the two and a half percent increase to that department's bottom line, and we arrived at a number. In this case, it's six hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven fifty-six. Just to reiterate, again, ignoring the seven hundred thousand, we don't care what's in tab one. We have to work within the confines of two and a half, so to be pragmatic, we did two and a half percent increase off of our current year's budget. It really is irrelevant in what's in tab one, because we only have a certain amount of money to work with. And when we consider that, which I'll show you in a minute, we still arrive at a deficit, so taking that just plainly alone, all by itself. And you do that exercise for general gov. Public safety, for that exercise, you arrive at two and a half percent of more of one point eight seven seven million, you get one point nine two four million. For the school, just looking at this number, two and a half percent more, the formula's right here, in case people aren't buying it, is four point nine three zero million. Down here, uh, Public Works, eight hundred and eighty-six thousand is two and a half percent over la- over a present year's budget. You keep going on these orange columns, you know, Health and Human Services, Culture and Recreation, and then the rest of it, we decided we couldn't touch. We were left with a hundred and forty-eight thousand, I'm sorry, we were left with a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar deficit, still. That we still had to make up. Now, the reason for this deficit plus adjustments is that is inclusive of what we had predicted at the time to be our number one priority, which was the wage adjustment, so that was the delta between the two, but just doing two and a half percent off of this year's budget to the departments that we feel like we, we have the ability to adjust with or work with, we're at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars short, still. Or is everybody following this so far?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so to split up the remaining hundred and fifty thousand, the following math was done, which is right down here. The total of all of those departments that were in orange, and there were one, two, three, there were six of them. Reminder, these are the departments that we felt like we could adjust. So it is only best if we're trying to figure out the proportion that each of those budgets makes up in terms of the total, to only consider those numbers in the total, so if you total up those six departments, they arrive at a number of eight point seven three three million dollars of our total budget. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Is anybody confused by that? Cuz the, the following is how we arrive at the re- at the remainders here. So, if that's your basis, then to split up the remaining hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar deficit, general government's overall budget, which is all the way up at the top, and in this case, it's six seventy-six, makes up seven point nine four percent, and the number, you know, the number's right here, i- i- it's a formula, so it's referencing the total. And when you go all the way up, it's gonna reference that department's budget, six ninety-three. And then you get your percentage that that general government makes up of the eight point seven million, and you arrive at this percentage. Public Safety represents twenty-two percent of the total, School fifty-six percent. So then what we did is we applied those percentages to the remaining deficit, which in this case, call it a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is right here, which is the total of all of these, and you arrive at your, your additional number that you need to cut off of the number off of two and a half percent from last year. So we increased every department by two and a half percent, that didn't get us all the way there, they needed to take an additional cut, we did it proportionally to the size of their budget, which is where the eleven, seven, sixty-seven, in the case of general government comes in, which is where that number is right here. Which, when you subtract the two of them, you get to the total that we needed to get in in column, uh, in column tab one point two five, so you get the six eighty-one, nine eighty-nine, which was placed right here. I didn't place it in here because I was hoping that when it was filled in, it would auto-sum, and these two would match, and we'd call it a day, that's where I'd hoped we'd be at today, but we're not there, we're far from there, honestly. Um, and so, while I'm frustrated by that, I, I understand where the confusion is, I don't blame anybody, but you know, that this is the spreadsheet that was sent, this number was, um, either, it was either not understood or ignored. It, it, I'm assuming it's just not understood, like, I don't know, if we were looking at this number, what anybody thought it meant, I guess, I mean, it's sitting at the bottom of column one point five, but obviously it was misunderstood, so here we are.
Okay, well, that was very helpful, Matt, thank you, I think that, um, uh, I think it's really a matter of, I mean, it seemed to me that eleven thousand dollars was cut from general government, but apparently it was, um, it wasn't the total amount that, uh, the column wasn't where we were, uh, actually working from. So now we're fourteen thousand dollars over instead of eleven thousand dollars.
Under.
Yeah, because we added, uh, things, but also, um, it was working from the wrong column.
Yeah.
It had to be an additional cuts, which is, I think, that, that notion was maybe mis- misunderstood.
Okay, all right, so do you wanna go through the exercise of just going through each general category and determining where we are, and then making decisions about what to do from there?
I mean, yeah, I mean, we've gotta find fourteen grand, I mean, I think, I think our basis point has gotta be referencing what our present budget is and reducing things back to that, that we can, I mean,
Okay.
Things are ob- or seem obvious to me, do they seem obvious to you folks? I mean, it's only nine hundred bucks, but I feel like we've gotta do that.
I would, I, I guess I would have a question as to how this was left with the department heads.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would probably say now that I understand where my misunderstanding was, that I take it and send it out again.
Yeah, I, I would like to see them make the decisions, I don't know how quickly the turnaround can be, but.
Okay. So we're not, that's fine, so we don't need to do the bu- we don't need to do the budget.
Uh, I don't, other, other, um, can we go through and just see where, where each department lands? So that now we're all on the same page, and, and let them again, uh, come up with their own figures. We're, we're up against a wall, though, on Thursday, so everybody has to be a hundred percent clear of what number they have to arrive at. And let's just see where the departments each fall right now.
Can I just ask a silly, a silly question here?
No.
No, I cannot.
Not a silly one.
No que- no questions, silly man. Is there, is it, is, I'd be lying if I said that this isn't stressing the hell out of me, so.
Yeah, why don't, why don't you get rid of some of the figures then in, uh, column F?
Um, well, no, because there, I feel like, no, I get it, but, I mean, can, is there, is there a possibility, I mean, we're feeling pressed for time, we can point fingers all we want. Is there a way to just approve an operational budget and go month to month here, or just go one month? And then, like, we, I mean, we had to do this before, right? I mean, I, I don't know if we need.
That was because of the state, I mean.
Declaration to do that from Governor Baker, or could we just do that so that we could have another, a special.
Oh, we don't.
To approve.
We, we don't have that option.
No, it's the law, it's the law, with last year, there was, you know, it was passed at a state level that we're doing month to month because of the pandemic, we don't have that allowance at all. But let's just, can we just go, continue on what we're doing, Matt, and just now that, now that we sort of have the same uh, point of reference, so general government's off by fifteen, fourteen, five, one, seven, the police are off by, what, eighteen or something?
Public Safety, yeah.
Eight, yeah, what, you wanna highlight that?
Us, the police, fire, and building.
Right, right.
So then you have to further break that down to each of those individual departments.
Yep. And then where, where does Public Works land?
Um, yeah. I mean, just for reference, like, uh, I mean, that is the school number.
Yikes.
Because, cuz it's, this is like, this is the only number we have to affect, and it's, it's already in there.
Right, I, I thought you would pl- I remembered you plugged that one.
Yeah, yeah. The biggest, I think, difference is comparing it to what they were asking for.
Yeah, I mean, this is the, yeah, let me just make sure that this. Hold on.
I mean.
I, I wanna, I wanna just check this real quick.
What about vocational tuition, we based it on, like, what we see here, that there were fifty, fifty kids going, and then there were, like, we, we allowed for six additional. And tho- those, those are the ones that are big numbers, so I just wondered if, you know, if that might be a possibility to reduce it even by one is about twenty thousand, right?
Yeah, it's basically eighteen-six.
I mean, it could catch up with us, but.
What do you wanna do?
I was just wondering if it, you know, last, usually we kind of over, uh, overestimate the number of vocational students, and I know we don't wanna be under either, but that's a, that's almost twenty thousand dollars right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that number there is an increase of six students over this current year.
Yeah.
Do we wanna put in the number for Admin Assistant Highway? Do we have that?
Yeah, we do. It would go from, it would go up by nine hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty cents.
The annual be?
Yeah, the annual would be twenty-three, six ninety-eight, eighty.
Twenty-three.
Six nine eight eighty.
And that, is that four percent? That seems higher.
It was, the, it, the current is twenty-two, seven, eighty, eighty-five. And it went to four.
Why does it say eighteen-two-one-five?
Again, it was a vacancy.
Okay, alrighty.
Well, the eighteen-two-one-five would be level funded, and that didn't even have a two percent increase in it, so.
Okay, alrighty.
That, just so you know, the current wage was seventeen forty-six. With the increase, it went to eighteen sixteen per hour for twenty-five hours a week, this is how we got here.
Okay, all right, having the vacancy explains it. So we can just figure out the, um, deficit there.
Yeah, we, yes, at the time, I believe, there was, there was a, there was a medical leave, so there was seventy-five percent, and then there became a bona fide vacancy.
Okay.
Um, well, I mean, this one's under.
Because of the stormwater we were gonna take out, right?
Right.
Right.
Yes, but remember, that's not rep, um, wait a second, let me just. Yeah, that, that's the reason, that is the reason why it's under. And it's able to pick up the, that additional, that additional wage increase. But it is being referenced off of, remember, the current budget, which has it in there.
Yeah.
A percent plus, minus the fifteen, gets you to the eight seventy-one. But there's a, there's a, you know, there's a plus here.
Okay.
There's nothing filled in here, so I don't know how to deal with this, I would imagine that it's, uh, I would imagine that it's carryover here, no? These are contractual. Like this, these top two are contractual, yeah?
Correct, well, then, well, yeah, it's not a contract, it's just the wages.
Well. Um.
Type in the number, because if you copy it over, it's gonna take another two percent on top of it.
I understand that, I can see that, but it is, you know, we wanna work in contract here, and, I mean, we've, we've identified the positions that that we're looking more deeply at, but this one I see here like health agent, I, I mean, health director. Does health director have a contract, and is that, what, what are we doing here? I just wanna make sure that we're being consistent.
Isn't that two and a half percent, or two percent, I'm sorry?
It is.
Forty, forty-eight to forty-nine.
In there.
Okay, so that's what we, that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. There's definitely, um, hold on one second, I gotta do, there's something glitchy with this. That I've gotta correct here for. Sorry, I, I was unable to click on certain cells, and I think it was just some glitch with the program, but now it's fine. All right, what's Council on Aging Director?
Okay, we're going for changing the hourly rate, not even, that was the most significantly under, underpaid person on the, on the budget. And so the increase came up to be, to bring this person still to the lowest in that category. The increase would be fifty-five hundred, five thousand five hundred thirty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents.
So the total annual is?
Thirty-three, two twenty-four, twenty-six.
Just for the heck of it here, we know that this position's full-time.
Well, it's thirty.
It's twenty-six hours.
Twenty-six hours a week.
And you did it off of? I mean, if I just do the number you gave me minus the number we're paying the person now, there it is, okay, so you got it.
Okay. Matt, can I ask you about the earlier category, we had, we had definitely agreed that the, um, expenses for the Board of Health, um, you know, to restore those to three thousand, on, your process then to, uh, create this ca- cu- category, is it the original column or the second one? There you go.
Yeah, that's, that's where we should be.
Thanks.
Um, I, I don't know how you guys wanna handle this.
Right.
This was donation last year, so. Um, Animal Inspector salary, I'm assuming, I mean, this is just, this is two percent.
Yeah.
Cuz we prioritize this, like, just to, just to summarize, like, we, this is a priority, like, this is why we're doing this?
Yes.
Yeah, the two and a, the two percent.
Yeah. What's this? Council on Aging?
Assistance, uh, what's the, what's the?
Dollar map is the increase would be five hundred and seventy dollars and two cents to the total of, nine thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars and two cents.
That's grant paid.
It's partially grant paid.
Where are the wages in on this? Because like, council, council on aging wages, like, this is all.
Council on Aging Wages.
Okay. So how do we deal with this math? Five seventy oh two.
Yeah, I would add that there.
To, um, to which basis number?
To the fifth, to the.
Move the approved budget?
Yeah.
Okay. So, okay.
Let's see what that looks like, cuz there are other, other people in those, in those wage lines.
There's more than one position in the way.
There's more people in that wage line.
So you don't wanna do it here?
No, there's, there's not on the Council on Aging Wages.
You know, the volunteer coordinators are of the state formula grant.
Right.
Put the five seventy oh two.
Right.
Where?
There.
Okay, so I am putting it here, so. So that clears that up. I'll, I'll, I'm just gonna highlight this because that's where we put it.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna un-highlight this. Now I didn't fill in any of the rest of this, so let's just see how this goes.
What's the difference? Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Wow.
Thirteen, four.
Okay.
You know, five grand of that is the donation, so it's really.
Right.
Eight.
Yep.
And the eight is in, well, it's definitely in the wages, so that's where, that's where the delta is.
Okay.
That makes sense, okay. Uh, culture and rec. Did we do? Why, we have this in red because.
There is a position, the lib-, um, one of the librarian.
Yeah, the, the youth librarian.
Uh, okay.
Adjustment would be one thousand one hundred seventy-four dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, and that's off of.
Wages, yeah.
Yeah, but which one?
Under, under ways, library way.
Sure, I get it, but if I, am I adding that to this year's, but, from this year's budget? Or am I adding it to this, the tab one, which is already providing two percent?
I, I hear what you're saying. Are we double counting that?
Yeah, I don't wanna double count.
Yeah, I hear you. Um, I, I'm assuming that the two percent was factored in there.
It would be in the tab one.
Yeah.
Off, off of tab one.
Right.
On, on all, all, all of the positions.
We, we would have to go back and look at all of those because if they were already factored into the number, then we have to back it out.
Yeah, you, you were giving figures for a four percent total and it should have been already only twenty?
Right.
I think, I think the figures that we got before, if, the children's librarian, librarian, I believe, total annual is twenty-nine, four, thirty-seven and twenty cents.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Well, it's.
That's what it is currently without the, without the two percent or without the fourth, whatever, two or four.
Creative scenes spreadsheet, it was twenty-nine, five, fifty, forty-two.
Right.
Okay.
And then with the, yes, and then with the two percent and the, and the bump, it went to thirty thousand, seven, twenty-four, ninety-two. So i- it was, yes. We, we, we calculated here for individuals, but not, not for this budget to back that first.
Percent, the two percent increase in all the positions were already counted in. And so the adjustments that, of the positions that were under, on the wage scale.
Right.
We just added in higher amounts than we needed to for the ones that were additional two percent.
Yes.
Okay.
That we can figure out.
Okay, I don't know what, if we need.
Tonight, it's gonna take time, but yes, that we can do.
Okay. Alright.
The additional difference should be six hundred and two dollars and eighty-three cents.
Total, okay, but we, do we need to go back and put them all in, uh, correctly on this thing tonight?
Well, if we can get as close as we can, yes, I think we probably should. Matt?
I, I don't disagree.
Okay.
So Ed, if you can back that up, that would be great for the other positions that we've already gone over.
Well, let's just work with this one. Do we have a number on this?
We'd add six, so, six hundred and two dollars and eighty-three cents to that, sixty-five, seven, ten, eighty-nine total.
Okay. So that one's less.
Yep.
Okay, so what do you, what, is there another act, I mean, we, do you wanna know how short we are?
Yeah.
Okay, so that'll just be the deficit number summed. Forty-one thousand over. As of right now.
Is that adding up all the additional?
That's adding up all of these numbers, including the minuses.
Okay. You already fixed all the wage amounts?
Well, we, I mean, you guys were discussing, like, if we have the correct wage amounts in for the numbers. If you wanna go through that exercise, we should do that. If you feel like we can, we can arrive at accurate numbers. I, I don't disagree with doing that. If we can get the accurate numbers, if we need more work on that on the side, then that's fine.
She already came up with a, uh, handout that had all the numbers, so.
I know she worked, she worked incredibly hard on it and I know the numbers that she has are accurate, it's just how do they fit into the budget, given that sometimes we're paying out of grants, sometimes people weren't there last year, sometimes the, the positions aren't split out, I mean, there's a, that's the, for the public, that's the.
Well, we.
Why this looks a little disorganized, but the math is there.
Yeah.
Yep.
Could you just go through each category, Matt? Just the, the sum total of what, what's over, I just wanna jot it down, please? So we're, we're short on fourteen, five, okay?
On general go.
Yep. And just for each one, if you don't mind, fourteen, five?
Public safety, we're over eighteen grand. Education, we're not because we're serving them. That number. Public works, we are budgeting. I mean, there's a surplus.
Yeah.
Of four grand. Health and Human Services is over by thirteen. Culture and Recreation is under by eleven hundred.
There's a part of me that feels like if we're all committed to having the stormwater be part of a, um, article separate, that maybe we should just, uh, take the surplus and apply it to the mosquito program.
Well, these are the numbers that we have, I don't.
I know, I'm just saying that, I mean, we're basically, I mean, I don't know if it works, you know.
I mean, collectively, we still need to find forty-one grand.
Okay, alright, let's just stick collectively. Okay, so if the numbers can be plugged into wages, so they're accurate and, uh, the numbers are in the direction are very clear to the department heads, then we'll have to get this back ASAP.
If we go back and look at, at general government and what we were talking about for the technology, I think we touched on it last, last meeting, but should we really think about the technology part coming out as part of the override? That twelve thousand or whatever, we had eleven thousand now?
I think we had twelve fifty with fifteen on the override.
Well, then it just got cut, so.
I reduced it a little bit.
Took fifteen hundred on three thousand.
Yeah, I, you know, when we're, can I, let's find, um, technology from, what, what are, what are we doing with the technology money specifically?
We're. Over to the, uh, subscription cost of Microsoft three sixty-five. We were, well, and of course, a lot of this is in the override budget, but, uh, looking to add telephones, uh, to, uh, purchase telephones to go voice over IP. Uh, we were looking to have someone convert, uh, us, all the, all of us and, and the remaining PCs over to, uh, the Microsoft three sixty-five, uh, service-wise. Um, and then we've got our regular IT budget in there, uh, as far as, uh, at, at this point, would be email, storage for the website. Website maintenance is up above.
Yep.
I mean, you, I mean theoretically, it's tight. You could go back to the, you know, fifty-four hundred and the seventy-nine hundred and flat, uh, flat rate it to this year and then just use the fifteen and the twelve fifty and the override.
Well, why don't we let, why don't we let Ed work on general government? If we're gonna let the other department heads work on it now that we're clear what the, uh, deficit is and, um, that will be his decision he can make with Technology Committee or whoever else. Forty-one thousand is the target number.
Well, that's what we're trying to get, but if the individual departments find the saving, you know.
Yeah, it might be that, it might be, we, we have to look at it more collectively than individually. Does the Finance Committee have any suggestions or questions?
No, I don't. I think whatever questions I have are premature right now if we still get this to work out.
Okay.
Does anybody hate the direction that we're going in because like it, you know? Or does anybody think this isn't fair?
Can we just look at the school again?
So, yeah, I mean, that's a whole nother discussion, I think.
Okay.
Thirty thousand dollar increase over last year on a, what, six hundred thousand dollar ask.
Yeah, personally, I don't think we can, we should go any lower there, to be honest with you.
Any lower than what?
You've already got plugged in that four million.
Eight forty-six?
Six, eight ninety, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I mean personally, you know, I, I, I feel like that's, um, I mean, historically, the school doesn't go up thirty grand every year. I think we're, I, I, I think if we're, if we're not, if we don't realize, not, you know, I don't know the effects on every other department, so it may very well be the same, but like thi- this, this situation here, a thirty grand increase is, you're, is consistent with massive layoffs.
Yes. You're absolutely.
Cuz historically, our school budget on contract increases, um, by previous budgets that I have goes up two to three hundred grand every year. So.
So the five, the five point two is the contractual obligations.
Um, no, this is, this, this right here is a number that we plugged in because they, they were very late to their submission. And they, and we plugged in a two point two five, this five point two two one million is representative of a two point two five percent increase over this present budget as a placeholder.
So it's four and, okay.
Their, their ask, it, their, what they came to us with is the five point four, call it five point five million.
Yeah.
Which, you know, if you reduce, I mean, i- i- it was a, it was a contractual increase plus needs and needs is defined as we need them, not want them. Um, but if you consider the additions that were meant to stave off additional expenses, that was two hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, you know, their real, their budget is this number minus, and I'm using round numbers here, but two hundred and forty thousand, I mean, they,
Good.
They're, you know, but five point two, five, five million.
Yeah, and I, I mean, my analogy on that figure is it's actually low and probably should be, I won't say should be, but may be fairly closer to that four point nine, but by doing that, it also means that the cut, the reductions on the municipal side are gonna be, have to be higher.
Yes, no, yeah, obvious, like. Which goes back to the original question, like, how do you do this? How do you do this fairly? I, you know, I don't.
Well, and go- going back to your other idea about the vocational tuition, if, if that's representing six extra students, could we split the difference and make it three extra students or two extra students? Um, just to not have quite as much and apply that to the elementary school line?
Yeah, and move, and just move the money around within the department. I mean, I, I'm, I'm, the information that I'm getting from people at the school is that with regard to this year, that, that number's been reduced as far as it can go, but I, I could be wrong. Margaret's raising her hand, if, if, but we, I, I don't know, is that we wanna open this box, by the way?
Uh, what do you mean, open this box, Matt?
If we acknowledge Margaret, are we gonna be acknowledging, like, we just have to think that if we start acknowledging people, do we have to acknowledge everyone?
Well, uh, she's the Chair of the Hampshire Wooden School Committee. I think I'd like to hear what she has to say, so Margaret, if you're free and, uh, able to speak, go ahead. Thank you for letting me know, cuz I have, I'm, I've been focused on this spreadsheet, so Margaret, you wanna say, uh, something?
I gotta find her first.
Yes, she is.
It'll take a few seconds.
Okay, I just got unmuted, thank you. Um, I just wanted to um ask you to be a little bit cautious about reducing the vocational tuition. Um, because numbers as of yesterday, we have fifty new students applying for um Smith Folk. And their principal is prioritizing students who have physically been in school, which is our students. So um I I would just caution you about reducing that too much, that's all.
Are there really fifty new? I thought the existing number was fifty.
Well, you have some graduates.
What's that?
You, well, you have grad, people who've graduated, and then you have a new crop coming in, and so the numbers that we're seeing for applications from our eighth and ninth graders is higher.
Okay, so how many total students are there? I think we heard last time.
I don't know, I'd have to find that out, I can find out and text.
No, that's okay, I think what we had, you know, said that fifty six was uh so that we're budgeted for six over the current amount. Thanks, Margaret. Any other, what, uh, any other questions on? What, uh, the current budget, did you wanna go through um anything else about the school, anybody?
I just, I just agree, I I think a thirty thousand dollar increase is is totally insufficient for what their needs are and their ask, so I just don't know how we get there.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah.
Historically, what has been the uh? The uh post-budget formulation with the post discussion with the school. With, in a situation like this, where you've got such a significant difference, I mean, do we go back with it, any kind of dialogue or just go back with a mandate?
Well, in my experience, um. This is a larger increase than the local school committee has requested in my term on the select board.
No.
And so usually we're talking about a much lower differential. And historically, up until a couple of years ago, Hampshire Regional would have a much higher percentage, and four towns with approval it, Southampton would be. Had to go along with it, and that would dramatically impact the municipal side and the local schools for that matter. In the last couple of years, the Hampshire Regional budget has been two and a half percent or less. One year was because they pushed things over to capital to make it work, and this year they're using excess and deficiency funds to make the increase only one point something percent. This is the first time we've actually been in a position, while I've been on the school committee, where the number for at the local level is as high a percent as it is, usually it's a much uh. Uh, easier back and forth, frankly, and then one year where it was particularly difficult. Uh, two years ago, three years ago, maybe we had the override and it passed, so we averted disaster there.
Right. Well, I, cause I guess the, I mean, the biggest thing that's jumped out. Um, to me. Has been their special education tuition and the transport, which are really uncontrollable. At this point, that is three hundred and forty five thousand dollars this year. And and the total is like four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, so. That's a, that's a tough situation, really.
Yeah, I mean, which puts you at the five point two two million mark somewhere in there, right, on two two five, which is. That, that's true, yeah. Yeah, their contractual increases are in the neighborhood of this number, but then that uh. Sinks the battleship.
Yeah. But, but if, if we kept it at that five two, not that we have the ability, just asking a question at the five point two. Could we live with that, cause that's like a three hundred and seventy five thousand dollar difference that we'd have to find somewhere, but it's better than seven hundred thousand.
Now. How do you go, how do you go back and 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 absorb the four hundred and thirty thousand dollars to do anything about?
Yeah.
All of a sudden, okay, well, we gotta lay off teachers, I mean, that, I know it's a tough situation, but. It's, it's gonna be.
So we, if we go ahead and put in the contractual increases uh plus. It says budget tab one is requests level funding plus contractual, so is that the contractual plus the two percent?
This is Ed's two point two five percent placeholder, I mean, and if you have that number, I'm happy to plug it in. Do you, do you know the number, the?
The adjusted number that they came back to?
Well, do you, do you know, do you know the number that does not, you know, you know, you know how they had. Their level funded plus contractual increase, I mean, they came to, they came to the meeting with a needs budget, like, because that's. By process, how the school committee's gotta do it, but then they outlined, I thought it was like two hundred and thirty or two hundred and forty thousand dollars of additional needs. To be able to deal with all of this, that they vigorously defended, that in one meeting they removed, and then in the next meeting they added back in, if you know that number, then we should be able to arrive. At their purely just contractual increase number that doesn't take into account. They, yeah, well.
Didn't, didn't Eliza mention something about two hundred and seventy four thousand last week?
Yeah.
Last meeting?
I might be able to actually look this up, you can't see what I'm doing.
I mean, technically speaking, if the other departments um were able to put over in the column contractual increases and two and a half percent. If we were to ex- do the same thing for the schools, what would that number be?
Yeah, well, I mean, cause we need that number, because that's ultimately gonna be probably what our, or at least it's gonna be something that we discuss with regard to the o- override.
What, what number is it you're looking for, Matt?
I'm just looking for, can their their contractual increase number less, less the, cause they're at, their total ask is the, is the, is the number over here, which is the five point, nearly five point five million. But that, that inclu- that includes some additional ask that's heavily backed up with reasons. And I believe that those additional ass add up to two, two hundred and thirty or something, or two hundred and forty thousand dollars, but I I can try to.
Yeah, I don't have that.
Okay, so hold on, let me just try to look it up. You can't see my screen, can you?
Um, we can see a screen.
Which is just a spreadsheet.
Yeah.
You're not seeing all of my emails, are you?
No, oh. Do we want to?
No. No, I'm just, I'm just wondering whether what I'm doing is. Private or not, um. All right, I I have this number, so let me just do it. Sixty eight, eight fifty seven.
Roughly two sixty nine.
Um, I actually have it at two eighty five. This is another seventeen. I just wanna make sure that it's right. Oh, wait a second, I'm sorry, I I didn't, I didn't do this right. Let's see, adjusted number. I was adding the wrong column, um, no, I have a hundred and, what did you say?
I said two sixty eight, eight fifty seven.
I have one seventy eight.
Oh, yeah, all right, now I'm in, yeah, okay, one seventy eight, eight sixty four.
You got it, that's what I got.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I got.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So all the other departments, let's take the police officers, for example, they are contractual, so they have uh, that's already sort of decided where they're going. And then we gave the entire department, we didn't give them, but the 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 budget includes a two and a half percent increase to. The rest of their expenses, that's not two and a half above the contractual, right, or is it?
It was two and a half off the previous year, correct? Matt? What, so, what are you asking?
So I'm just wondering, like, uh, I just want to make sure you're not counting things twice, so the police officers, for example, have contractual increases. So they have whatever they're determined to get from this step and from their cola based on the contract, and then we're giving the department or the category of uh public safety. A two and a half percent increase, is that a two and a half percent increase include these police wages, or is it only two and a half percent increase in the non-wage, non-contractual category?
No, just, just, so, so no, it was just pragmatic on the bottom line, Rainy, like, the the departments have to control their budget, so like, we were just, we were honestly ignoring all of this. And we were ignoring, we were ignoring contracts, because, because at the end of the day. If we're speaking in facts, that's what we need to do, like, I get that the contracts.
That's all I wanted to clarify.
They'll lay people off.
So we're just taking the previous budget, adding two and a half, and it includes everything, and um if the contracts are more than two and a half, it'll be less, if it's less, it'll be more, so we're not, we're not um. Giving them a two and a half above a contract.
No.
So it's not two and a half plus contractual, it's two and a half flat, okay?
On their budget, previous, this year. And then they've got to figure out how that.
The exercise you just went through with the um, with Ken then, is to take the previous budget of the elementary school and add two and a half.
No, just add, well, that's right here, that's the four point nine three zero.
Okay, so you are making an exception from the school then and saying that two and a half is just not enough to cut it, therefore, we're gonna let them include contractual above and beyond two and a half. I'm just asking the method, that's all.
The, all we did for the school was we added two and a half to their previous year's budget and then backed out the. Their, their response, their, their portion of the difference, which was eighty three grand, they had to subtract eighty three grand from the two and a half percent increase that we gave them.
Okay, and now you're looking at what additional amount to give them based on which, what figure?
So two and a half percent more than last year's budget gets you to four point nine.
Yeah.
Three.
Yep.
Tracting out eighty grand gets you to the four point eight four six number, which is where they would finally rest this year, which if you compare to last year is a thirty thousand dollar increase over last year.
Okay, so then the additional amount that you were working at with Ken was.
Their.
It was contractual?
Their legitimate contractual increase, which is this number.
Okay.
Five point three one six.
Okay. And the difference.
Adding anything, just contractual increases based on.
Difference between that and the forty eight four six is what?
Um, is. Four hundred and sixty nine grand. Four hundred and seventy grand. And if any of that gets into T, if any of that gets into people, remember, we're only banking, we're only banking fifty percent of the savings.
Right.
On wages, cause you got it, that, the other fifty percent goes to unemployment, so if you gotta make up four sixty nine and it's all people, you might as well double it. Does that all make sense to everyone?
Okay, so the four sixty nine um is the difference between five, three, one, six, and four, eight, four, six.
Yeah.
And um we have at least up till now, looked at each department the same, two and a half uh percent of the difference of the deficit, and then add it to them. Do you suspect that any of the other departments, again, I'm gonna use the police as an example, since there's a lot of contract employees. Um, we're basically doing something different right here, we did not include what the contract uh increases are in the police department, we just said two and a half. And left at that.
Yeah, we're not doing anything different here, I mean, cause, remember.
I'm just asking, I mean, if we're, we're just looking at numbers to see where they land, we haven't plugged anything in yet.
No, I mean, this number honestly should be right over here, because this was just our estimation.
Yeah, why don't we get rid, get rid of the five two two, yeah, thanks, that helps.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, this is their contractual increase number.
Okay.
This was their ask, so like, I mean, I could put this back over in the override, but I, I mean, we, we gotta start also directing some attention to. How we're gonna do the override and how we're gonna be physically responsible with an override as well.
Okay.
So I, you know, we can do some of that now, or we can wait until we have a balance and then look at, look at what it looks like from a balance perspective, it's kind of like, you kinda, I feel like you need the balance before you can really.
Yeah.
Talk about an override.
So did you say that right now with leaving the school the way it is, that the over, uh, we're over forty one thousand?
Yes, leaving the school at their peg number that we served them from last meeting, there were over forty one grand.
Okay.
And you can see where the differences are, I mean, some departments are under the number that they want, but you know, the the three, the three departments that are over are general government by fourteen grands.
Public safety.
No, yeah, we're, did I skip over that, yeah, public safety is over by eighteen. Um, Board of Health is gonna be over by thirteen, or you know, not Board of Health, but the Health and Human Services is gonna be over by thirteen and a half. And that's it, that's your forty one.
Forty one. I'm just wondering, um, I think if if people agree, we can kind of leave it there for now, since we don't have whatever people want to do to decrease it, I'm just wondering that the finance committee maybe has a suggestion. We have two lines that um. Are significantly different from last year, one is um Matt's family donated five thousand dollars to the mosquito program, so they look like they're thirteen thousand dollars over if they can absorb the additional five. And the stormwater was paid for last year twenty five thousand dollars, it is now uh up to thirty four, thirty five, and the decision was made to put it in for an article to be voted on by the voters. Um, are we expecting each department to um? You know, adjust those changes within the department, or does anybody have a suggestion about handling those amounts as a collective? Nobody have a suggestion?
I don't see how you're gonna get to some of these levels unless you reduce a level of services. And whether that means. You know, a a half, a half day closed, or I'm not sure, I mean, I'm, I'm certainly not in favor of laying people off, no matter what department they're in, um.
But I thought the question was on the five thousand dollars and the.
Yeah, that's the, basically the question I asked, do you think that each department should make adjustments within the department? Uh, given that it was not, you know, the same in the budget last year, or do you think that you, the finance committee or the select board should make a decision about those amounts? Before we turn to the departments uh and ask them to make adjustments? That's what I was asking.
Yeah, I would think so.
Okay, do you have a suggestion, Ken?
No. The five thousand, that, that. Aside from the number, I don't know what that does for us, I've heard that that's surveillance and it's not eradication.
It's surveillance.
But it, but it.
But it, but it does make us eligible for money from the state if we need to eradicate. And I can also tell you that this is new, because I saw the come, question come across by listserv today. Is that if we wanted to opt out of the mosquito control regional program, that we have to submit our own management program to the state to be able to do that. So probably the five grand is a bargain.
Yeah, I would think so. Sounds like it.
I have a document. I'd asked a lot of questions about the Board of Health budget and about the mosquito program, as well as the Sharps program. And I do have an email that has Pineapple Valley Mosquito Control District. I have, and I'm happy to send it to um, everybody. But it gives some backstory on it and what uh, we get out of it, what towns are part of it, current members Agawam, Berniston, Deer, Fairleigh, Slum, Meadow, Hadley, North Hampton, South Hampton, West Springfield, Palmer. It goes into finance updates. There, every department is required to pay a minimum of five thousand dollars to the Pineapple Valley Mosquito Control District in order to join. Um, it goes into a lot of detail about it. Weekly reporting, annual report, mosquito identification. I mean, we have a lot of horses in town with the triple E and, I mean, I, I would, I just feel like this is, it would be really somewhat irresponsible to not fund this.
Well, the concern to me is that they would not be available to us in the event that we, you know,
Yeah.
we need some intervention and we're not eligible for it because we, we didn't kind of pay as you go kind of thing. So I, I think we need to stay in it. It's kind of like a, well, I won't describe it anymore.
Yeah, there's a lot of information. I'm happy to send it to you. And if, I'll, I'll just, yeah. So anyway, um, do you want to make a recommendation, anybody on the Finance Committee or Select Board on um, I, I think that might be difficult for the Board of Health to then adopt that within their own budget.
I would, I would think that's probably um, probably should come from the Select Board.
Yeah, I just didn't know if you had a recommendation at all.
You know, recommendation as to whether or not to do it?
No, if you had any addition, you know, anything in terms of the, you know, recommendation for line items based on what I just said. That's all. Okay, anybody else?
No, we're at the junction point now of whether or not we want to try to balance this thing right now, or whether we want to let the town departments try to arrive at the number that you know, they need to arrive at.
I'd be in favor with the latter.
Yeah. I just cleaned this up a little bit here. And do, let's just check this math here, which is our column. Make sure we're grabbing the right totals. So the orange number below it is the number to achieve. If the department's over. That makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Come on, buddy. Oh, crap, sorry. I lost my total.
And just to fill you a little bit, I just did, if I backed out the two percent on the proposed increases, adjustments, not increases, adjustments that we were making, it brings it down by uh, like twenty-one hundred dollars. So it picked up a little bit.
That extra twenty-one hundred dollars buys us a lot of goodwill, I think.
Well. No, I mean, there was a, there was a duplication in the process here. It was already built in to tab one. That, that, that was it. Chris, it wasn't, it wasn't in what ultimately happens. It was in the calculation on the budget. That's all. We're not changing anything. It's just how, how it was accounted for in this budget.
Gotcha.
We are thirty-two thousand eight seventeen off. Right now.
Good.
So I, I don't know if all the colors are already confusing, but if, if we, if we understand which colors we have to get to, just to be sure, so we don't go through this again tomorrow night.
Um, sure.
Do we need them in a different color? Just my suggestion.
Yeah, so um, let me, let me just check this to make sure, because we are thirty-two thousand off and that should that should technically add with uh, these columns. So if we do that. Alright, so why is there a difference there? So the difference is forty-one thousand.
That sounds like what you had said earlier.
Yeah, I know. So, so the difference is uh, just trying. Just give me a second, I'll figure it out.
And I know we haven't touched them, but all of our insurance, Medicare, increases have been already plugged in at, at two percent or two and a half percent increase?
Our, our insurances would be set contractually.
Wait, Matt finishes this.
I'm gonna, I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm checking the math and then I'm going to check something else again, because maybe one of, something, something's not summing, so I have to check all of it. And um, because those numbers should equal, and it's probably just because the column's not grabbing a number that it should be grabbing when I copied it over. So that the spreadsheet works. Okay, so now I'm gonna just check the totals. This should be grabbing all of these. Okay, so and the last check is this one down here. Not coming up with anything readily. Some groups, which is this. I'm just thinking about how I'm mathing, how I'm doing this math, because the, the real, yeah, so I am, I'm adding what the delta is, what, I'm adding the column based on the way that it is, not the way that it should be. So this one's over, the other one was under. I checked all those totals. Okay, so that is the sum of the group, and I'm comparing that to this revenue estimate. Which gives you this deficit. The other, oh, okay, I, I, I know what's going on here. The, the other num, the other numbers, th- this is, this is the true number. The thirty-two thousand is the true number, and I, I know where the difference is now. So the other numbers, we were basing off of this, the, sorry, I figured it out now. The other numbers in the reason, so these numbers that are down here, because the ma, the math changed a little bit. Um, and I'm gonna, I can show you where that is. So these, these numbers here, these, these differences are, like for general government, it is the difference between their number right now and the number they were asked to hit based on the previous meeting. So the six eighty-one was the number that we came up with based on the previous meeting. Which factored in a wage increase of eighty-two hundred dollars. Which was our rough estimate of what we thought that correcting those, those uh, um, positions that were in red would amount to. But in fact, they amounted to much more than that. It was not eighty-two hundred dollars. I mean, Francine would have most of this math and we can dissect that, but these numbers were based off of that math, that, that math, and I can show you that math down here. So our original deficit, not including that math, was right here, was a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Then we had a deficit plus adjustments, which includes this eighty-two hundred dollar figure that we added in. And that one hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar number is what we used to come up with. These additional deductions from each department.
Mm-hmm.
But now, remember, we actually added the true number in for wages up above. Like those true numbers are in there and it is not eighty-two hundred, so that is where the difference lies. So in actuality, and I'm, so now, you know, I'm not sure how to arrive at the fairway to basically be like, we gotta get, we have to find thirty-two thousand dollars when we're asking for forty-one above.
Yeah, so probably just take out the, the amount you added on the bottom there, the eighty something from the uh, figure on the bottom and go with the true numbers per department.
Right.
Okay, so, so instead of going with, um, I think I see what you're saying. So.
Yeah, because those, those, those adjustments were spread across various departments, not just in general government.
They weren't all general government, right?
So go off of the original deficit, you're saying? To figure out what it might be. I, I still think there's gonna be some discrepancy, but it would be closer. Is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Now that we've corrected for that?
Right.
Yeah.
Because it was ba- basically adding it twice, right?
Well, yeah, it, it's, yes, it's using the real numbers versus the numbers we had to estimate at previous meeting. It's better to use the accurate numbers. The problem is, yes, so the, the yeah, because this deficit number is. Yeah, I, I mean, this, I think this should work. Um, I go all the way up here, did I? Rich, you should mute yourself. I think we can hear something coming from you.
Sorry.
Okay. Okay, let's see now what we got. Let me just make sure that. I just want to check these that they auto, that they updated. And then we'll go from there. Okay, now let me add up the deficits and it should equal what, what we were working with. It should, I think, from. Okay, now let me add up the deficits and it should equal what, what we were working with. It should, I think, from thirty-seven, four, four, six. Is that where we are or not? I think we're closer. Yeah, thirty-seven, four, four, six. Yep. We're spot on. So the deficit's thirty-seven, four, four, six.
Okay. Thanks, Matt.
Yep, and if, you know, so now, just to summarize here and just to make sure, Ed, that like, for instance, we'll just use general governs the example. Tab, tab one point five is where we are. The budget right now presently rests at six ninety-six. We need it to be six eighty-two. We gotta find thirteen grand.
Additional, gotcha.
Okay, we gotta get, the, the, the number in this white box needs to get to this number in the, in the orange, which is six eighty-two.
Six eighty-two.
Yeah, and then public safety's gotta save an additional sixteen thousand. They gotta get to the one point eight nine three, and they're starting at one point nine one.
Right.
And, um, I mean, everyone else can s- well, that can stay where it is, sorry. Um, Health and Human Services has gotta get down thirteen. Uh, th- this is like, this is if we're being ultra fair, which is this entire exercise, cuz it's based on, it's based on percentages.
Yep.
I mean, the whole thing is literally a percent, a percentage, so it's, you know, uh, if you start veering from that, then
Yeah.
it's, then we're not, then, then we're not going by percentages. I mean, just so, so, you know, I'm bringing this up because
Yep.
I don't know how you get thirteen grand out of this department.
I don't either. And the other question is, does the five thousand count or doesn't it count?
It's, it's, it's a great question, but like, you know, um, yeah, it's a great question. But we are thirty-seven thousand dollars short, and if we start, you know, it depends on if we, you know, at what right now we've been ultra fair, and this is where the ultra fairness has gotten us, which is a thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollar difference, like, at what point do we decide to like? I hate to use the word fair, because
Yeah, I know.
Trying to be, but at what point do we get off of a percentage argument and we start going to things like we start, that we, that we generally do, and I'm not making fun here, but you know, at midnight we start turning off streetlights, so um, when we get to that point, we'll turn off the streetlights. I don't think we're at midnight yet. It's eight-thirty by my watch and we still got a couple days, so
Yeah.
turning off streetlights yet until the eleventh hour of the last day.
Well, you know, people pretty, are people comfortable with the money, um, from stormwater being put as an article? And with the five thousand dollars, um, ideally that would be funded outside of this department. And it was approved at a town meeting to join this mosquito control without significantly increasing the funding to that department. Uh, other additional funds, um, uh, or any, uh, additional, um, you know, areas of funding in the town that would cover that. I mean, I guess it is considered an operational expense, but it was never really uh, commented for in the budget of the board of health, frankly. So is there any, does anybody feel justified in any way of funding it outside the operating budget?
Running mosquito control outside the operating budget?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, well, one, we've never done that, and two, well, we actually, we have, um, um,
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, is the contract out on this this year?
No, so, well, this would be our third year.
Third year, so, yeah.
It is a three-year, uh, not that it wouldn't continue on, but it was set up as a three-year thing.
So in that sense, you could kind of look at it as a one-time expense this year? To put it outside the operating budget?
Yeah, I just didn't know if it would made sense to consider free cash, or consider operational stabilization or something outside the operational, because it is, I mean, we're doing that with stormwater. I mean, that's not an ongoing expense, but it kinda is going to be because of the compliance issue with the state and federal government. I'm just trying to see what we can do to, I mean, I just don't think it's absorbable in a board of health budget, frankly.
No, I don't, I don't either. Is, is there any reason why we couldn't take it out of free cash? Is that a bad practice?
It is if it's an ongoing operational expense.
Do we anticipate that to be the case, Ed?
I mean, I, I would thank you for saying it's valuable enough to keep in at this point in time that we're probably gonna look at, keep funding it each year.
Yeah, and hope they don't raise it. No, I, I, yeah, I think it's something we should stay with.
Within operations?
No, I, I mean, I, I'm okay for this time, not an ongoing basis, but, you know, just to get us through this next year of moving it into, you know, operational stabilization or free cash and come back and visit it again next year, uh, you know.
I just think it's, you know, it's similar to stormwater in some way.
It is.
Well, hopefully stormwater is gonna be declining. This would either, in my opinion, be stay the same or possibly go up, but let me, let me think of some options on that.
Okay, all right, so let's just leave it for now, um, and we'll just leave this as it is for now, and, um, you know, Chris made a good suggestion that we really loud and clear make the, uh, target number uh, a different color. Is this, it might be helpful unless, Ed, you're hundred percent clear and could give direction to all the department heads that need to chime in on this immediately.
No, it would help me if you made that, uh, target number a different color. Please.
Which target, which target number, like down here?
Yeah, one thirty-one, yeah.
Okay, so what do you, uh, what do you, what color do you want me to make it?
Well,
Green.
In this case, I would probably say, make the, make that target number in the different color, the thirteen, eight, sixty-six.
The same color?
Yeah, make that the green.
Make this green?
The difference, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, because in, in most cases, most of these, other than probably highway, get divided up between a number of departments, so they're not, when they enter their total, they're not gonna see what that comes to the six eighty-two. But if they take, if they take the thirteen, eight, sixty-six and say, okay, in addition to what you did yesterday, uh, you gotta cut another, whether it's six grand or seven grand or whatever comes out to proportionally in that that they will understand.
Okay, sounds good.
Just for completeness, I'll put a zero here.
Okay.
And then I'll just make these clear again, cuz everything else is clear up here.
Then your thirty-seven as well, Matt, your total, thirty-seven? There you go.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna get rid of this line. We don't need this anywhere.
Do we hold off on having a discussion about, um, uh, potential override? Until we know what, uh, these figures end up as? Cuz it might be shifting of any additional thirty-seven thousand dollar cuts over to a far right.
You're over, uh, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think that the, oh, I think that the override discussion's actually, uh, gonna be relatively easy.
Okay.
Personally.
Okay. Does anybody else wanna discuss anything more about the budget draft? So, somebody mentioned tomorrow night. Uh, I have a select board meeting posted for Thursday night, not tomorrow.
We actually posted, we posted for Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, just to cover everything, so.
Okay. Okay. Any last, any last comments? Go ahead, sorry, Ed.
Might, uh, maybe think about canceling four nights and go with Thursday night. That's up to you guys.
Yeah.
Ladies.
Yep, I think, unless there's a lot of questions about the articles that we're gonna talk about next, um, I think that makes sense to me.
Yes.
And, uh, Ken, do you have a meeting posted for Thursday at six?
Um, yes, we have posted for the same nights.
Okay, and it'll only be the budget at this point, I think. Unless something happens, it's so urgent that we can't. All right, so we have a thirty-seven, four, four, six deficit on this and a discussion about override next time. Or, uh, let's just see where we land, but people have to turn around pretty quickly, the discussion on. Sorry.
Somebody.
Sorry. Okay, let's go and talk about the articles, so, uh, is everybody good with that?
Excuse me. One other question, Maureen, on this. Can, can we get this report? Rerun tomorrow?
First, you said this one around, you mean, Ken, or?
Yes, yep.
Matt, can you send that to, um, everybody?
The spreadsheet?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll do it right now.
Excellent. Okay, so let's, uh, we're, um, hello, Robert, would you like to, um, chime in, please? He has to be unmuted, Ed, when you get a chance.
The Finance Committee's email is fincom with two Ms at townofsouthampton.org, correct?
Two M's.
No, one M.
One M.
One N.
One M. Fincom, one M.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody monitoring that?
Robert Floyd, one sixty. Sorry.
Hi, Robert, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Uh, Robert Floyd, one sixty-six B College Highway. I wanna point out that I heard earlier that you intend Plan A to sign the warrant on Tuesday, May eighteenth. At your regular scheduled Tuesday night meeting date. If and only if you need it an extra week, you have it for the next Tuesday, May twenty-fifth. And while I have your attention, the, um, town moderator, annual town meeting, article information uh, session will be held Thursday, June third, at seven o'clock.
Thursday, June third.
Yep, and we request the SALTI Samp to media to have them, uh, broadcasted live.
Excellent. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
And I think once we get through this process, we'll have to ha- resurrect the committee that put on the last very successful um, town meetings outdoors to, um, reserve microphones and all the usual things. Are you ready to move on to the articles? So the beginning are a routine business presentation of election, uh, education awards, presentation of certificates. Um, we have a policy around dividing up the free cash into the various, um, accounts and the dollar amounts, um, represent, I believe, the allocation into these, um, uh, accounts. I'd like to ask a question about that. What do we do with the interest on accounts in town? Is that just bundled in? Uh, is any of that interest available for any particular, um, reason?
I'd have to go back and take a look at how this particular account is handled, if that stays in these stabilization counts or if it flows back to, um, the general fund.
Okay, I think that's important to know as soon as possible. I mean, I remember, um, a previous select board member mentioning to me, don't forget you as, you have interests available to you on all these funds. Um, so that would be important to know. That would be, um, you know, a fair amount of money. Okay, uh, any other questions about the allocation to the capital stabilization operational and OPB? Okay, zoning change, zoning bylaw amendment. Uh, can someone speak to that?
Yes, this would be, uh, the zone change that the, uh, planning board had the public hearing on for the two parcels on the college highway, uh, next to the old Opa-OPA or JP Steakhouse.
Did they already submit this request to be an article for the warrant?
Yes, they did.
Okay.
That actu- that actually came along with the, uh, uh, initial petition for the zone change.
And was that a, um, by a signature of voters?
No, that was, uh, a single petitioner.
Single petitioner, okay. Um, the next ones are bylaws, the wet law, wet, wetlands, the stormwater, and the town bylaw amendments. We talked about them earlier. The, the town bylaw amendments will be mentioned, listed out, once we know?
Yes, they will.
Any questions about the bylaws?
No.
Chris, you know what, you wanna mention the CPC one since you're our rep?
I'm not.
Oh, who is?
I am.
Oh, okay. I thought, yeah, that switched, I guess. Wanna mention them, Francine?
Um, I mean, this is, this is what they, they talked about at their last meeting. Um, they're gonna request that they're gonna use seventy-five hundred dollars for their operating expenses, um. They wanna contribute, uh, give thirty-five hundred dollars for the open space educational, uh, program, which is gonna be, uh, I believe a brochure talking about the Burns Aquifer. The Conservation Commission fifty thousand dollars for the, as, um, as a match for the Mass Trails Grant. And, at our last meeting, we agreed to, um, continue funding the Edwards Public Library at to the, to the amount of, uh, sixty-two forty, as they are preserving historical documents and resources for the town, and they're uploading them on the town website so that, um, you know, it's available to the public. Um, this will be, I think, the third, third year that they're, they're engaged in this activity. Um, and there we have it.
Okay. I don't believe they're subject to our approval. Those are just, they are able to be presented directly to the public.
Yeah.
And then we have prior fiscal year bills revolving accounts, they're just renewing, uh, the amounts that are currently spending limits for the resolving accounts, and then transfer, um, for the water bonds there, um. I think those are pretty routine, um, town meeting um, articles. Matt, you wanna review the capital?
This is where we are with capital and, um, had some back and forth with the school, um, but, so this is, this is, this is finalized from the capital committee. This is, this is, and it's inclusive, um, school too, like, you know, nothing's gonna change here in the school column, um, and this is updated as of last night.
Anything different from the last time we had looked at it?
Yep, what has been added and considered is the replacing of water lines in the cemetery to provide water to grave sites.
And that would not be on this particular agenda list because it was just added last night. It is on the one for Thursday night.
Okay, thanks.
And we are maintaining a balance in the capital account of five thousand ninety-two dollars with all of these recommendations, which include Moses funded out of capital stabilization and we got a couple of vehicles for debt exclusion overrides, plus a greenway.
So is there anything that's right now under debt exclusion that we might be able to fund directly? I'm looking at more like the, the vehicle, forty-four thousand dollar vehicle?
Yeah, I'd like to take a look and see if we've got enough free cash left to possibly fund that that way rather than adding it to debt.
Okay.
What do, what do other people think about that? Just, you know, if we don't need to fund it and we have, you know, if we don't need to incur any debt on it, maybe we can, that'd be one that we might be able to swing without it.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, it's worth looking at, for sure.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I'm thinking of how many questions we could have on that ballot for debt exclusions, so.
Okay. So next step would be what, just looking at the fund balance and just?
Yeah, I mean, it, we're, we're coming up about five grand short here. If we use a combination of what would be remaining in free cash, which is thirty-four, three forty-four, plus the five that would remain in capital stabilization, you know, you're at thirty-nine and change, and they ask us forty-four and change, so.
Yeah, I'll take a deep dive on that tomorrow.
Okay.
No one do it.
Any questions on the capital items?
These, these all need to be commented on by Finance Committee, is that right?
Any budget ones?
Yes. Anything that has a, an appropriation of funding to it?
Okay.
And Matt, just a quick question on the masonry issues at, at Norris. This will take care of all the sidewalk issues. I know we did some last time around, but this completes everything now?
Yeah, this completes the remaining sidewalk issues. This completes the ma- major and minor masonry issues, which, which are both around windows and also at entryways and doors and also at the vertical columns that are out, that are right outside the front door. At the base of those, the salt has been getting at them. The, the interior doors and door closers is a safety issue on the inside and it's, some of that is being recommended, it's my understanding by the people that are running the lockdown procedures. Some of these doors don't have windows on them, so you can't see. And then they don't have the automatic door closer, which closes, which closes the door, so this tightens that up.
Yep.
And then the vertical blinds in the cafeteria and counseling rooms, I mean, we know what the blind, I mean, we sit in town meetings and the sun just, those blinds are are disintegrated, basically, they're, they're, most of them have fallen off of the rail that holds them and the sun has just killed them over time, so to keep some of the heat out and to deal with and to, you know, to deal with presentations that happen in there that does need, that does require some darkness. That's, that's what that's for, but that, you know, we utilize that space publicly.
Yep, okay.
And with regard to the sidewalks, it's just, as you say, that, that tightens up the rest of the safety issues related to that. And the carpet in the rooms is tightening up the rest of that, which is the buckling of the carpets in the remaining rooms where the carpet buckles and the heat and humidity.
Hey, Matt, I got one question on the masonry work that was listed as major because I wasn't clear myself on the actual, shall we say, verbiage of the request. And so my question is this, because it had, it had mentioned needing a structural engineer. So is that request partial structural engineer and partial repair or all actual repair?
Um, let me tell you. See if I have a better answer for you. Okay, so I have this open. Well, okay, so there's, it's kind of, the answer to this is, is twofold. I mean, we do do have a quote. So for what it's worth, it is in the amount of not ten thousand dollars, but then in the request, which is not presumably not in the quote, but that, that part I don't have. I mean, it says, so the request is there are three areas of masonry that will need a structural engineer to assess. Two of them are above main entrances and have large, long cracks in the cement blocks. And specific need is this is dangerous. Mandated by, and it is being mandated by regulation due to a building inspection. So.
But if the structural engineer comes back and says, you really need to do this, that, and it's a lot more money, it doesn't get done, correct?
Well, like, what do you mean, like, that would probably create an overage, wouldn't it? Is that what you're saying?
Well, they, they got ten thousand dollars in here. The structural engineer comes in and says, this is what you need to do to fix this. Writes a set of specs, they have to pay the structural engineer. And what he writes for specs, instead of a ten thousand dollar job, it's twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, in that case, you, in that case, you'd, you'd either, I mean, what would you do? You, 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 I mean, you can't, you can't spend more than you're allotted, so you wouldn't be able to do the project and you'd have to go back.
Right, okay, alright.
And either get a reallocation or return this money and then go in full, you know, right? That would be the process.
Okay, alright, I just didn't, I, I thought that was the case. I didn't know if they had already had a structural engineer, you know, look at it, that's what the quote was based off of. So I just wanted to make sure that my take on it was correct, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, the minor ones are not mandated by regulation, the major ones are, are being mandated. So the, yeah, the question is, is whether that quote that they have is inclusive of the, and that, that, I mean, that you'd have to pose to them, but the company is Mike McKenna.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So.
Okay, so that pretty much takes care of the capital ones, adding in for next time, the water lines for the cemetery. And then the other articles are transfer station enterprise fund, budget approval, water enterprise fund, budget approval, water department service truck from enterprise funds, one hundred and forty thousand dollars. Water department asset planning grant match from enterprise funds, transfer of ambulance receipts, one hundred thousand dollars for operations, transfer of ambulance receipts for ambulance debt repayment. I believe the next article is a citizen petition.
Yes, it is.
Petition article for a wage increase for the town clerk and the treasurer collector. And the last one is review any new articles received by May fourth at noon. So that was the deadline for May fourth was the deadline for people submitting articles. So that means there are no more.
Right, there is, there's one other one that's in your package that came before I put this agenda together. And that is Chief Illingsworth has requested an article be put on that would allow his communication wages and police wages to be combined into one line item.
Chief, you want to speak to that, please?
Let me find him, hang on.
Hi, good evening.
Hi there.
Good chief.
Nope, he's muted again. Had him for a minute.
There he is.
Yeah.
There we go.
Yes, I'm seeking to see if I can combine the wages between, with police, regular wages and dispatch wages. And the reason I say that is oftentimes, depending on the, there's a lot of unforeseen events that occur, whether they be critical incidents, whether they be injuries, sickness. This year in particular, we had the reform, we had, some of our officers are in the military, they get deployed. And there's, because they're unforeseen, I sometimes, it, it takes, it takes a toll on my, my budget, whether it's the police or dispatch budget. And what I would like to do is I, I tend to seek and find grants and I, if I could use that, if, if, if the, the budgets are combined, then when those grants get reimbursed or I draw from a grant, I can mix and match where there's a deficit in my budget based on unforeseen events. And that's really what I'm, the reason why I'm looking to do this. As far as oversight, if there's any concern about oversight, the pay codes would remain the same through my accounting system. It's a matter of just three keystrokes to give you a, an audit, if you will, or even an accounting of exactly where the money's going.
I think you saw what we just went through with having several positions combined into one line. It makes it really difficult to, to understand the difference, so to have two full groups of employees into one line, I think, I don't know, for me, I mean, if it's, if it's easy enough to provide the detail when it's needed, I think. So you're not going to be combining the police overtime wages, it's only general wages and communication wages?
That's what I would like, yes. And, and, and again, it's, it's, it's more so, and, and as you see my, my payroll, the, the pay codes will not change. It's not, my accounting system doesn't require that. It would just be a matter of, when the time comes and I see, oh, you know what? Because of all the incidents that occurred over the summer, whether it was police reform or COVID, and then I see, you know what, I have a little bit extra in dispatch because of grants. If those monies are combined, I can then use, instead of holding back on putting officers on the street, for instance, if I have extra money in there that came from grants from, through, through our communications, I can then put it towards police if it's all within the same line item. If it's not, then I have to seek approval of transfer of funds through a, through the town meeting, a special town meeting.
Isn't the, the, the grantor, don't they limit and define what their funds could be used for? Are they allowed to use it for cost purposes?
It, it depends on what it is. For instance, I used over the year, over this last year, and I haven't even been reimbursed yet, but there was a traffic safety, there was a traffic safety grant. And about five thousand dollars of that overtime has not been transferred back into my overtime account. But when, let's just say when it gets transferred back into my overtime account and I need I need to use it towards perhaps dispatch because somebody gets sick, I can do that. Or somebody gets hurt, or whatever the reason may be. I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to basically utilize one line account, so when I have other incoming funds that get reimbursed or drawn, I can, I can use them and kind of mix and match the wages according to my needs. Because so many things in my department are unexpected. There's been, you know, several critical incidents, there's been, you know, COVID really hit us. The, the the police reform is particularly going to hit us, especially next year, next year. As it did this year, just with even the, the activations of military officers. But also it's going to hit us in the, in the aspect of wages for part-time officers and that training and so forth. So let's say I get a grant from dispatch and I can utilize that towards when it get reimbursed, I can put it into the general wage account and it can go through, it could be used through general wages.
With those fine.
I guess I understand the, the, the idea of it. I'm just not sure it's the best accounting practice and I'm just wondering, I mean, you can't deficit spend and you can transfer funds at the end of the year. Anybody from finance want to chime in?
So we're actually talking about, if I'm looking back on the twenty twenty-one, chief, it's about two hundred and forty thousand and six hundred and fourteen thousand?
Yes.
So those numbers would be aggregated then?
Yes.
From the standpoint of, of monitoring these, as we get, you know, expense reports every period, those would be lumped together, so we, there's no identification as to where we are.
Not through the town's expense reports, no, no.
Is there any other way to achieve your objective?
I'm just trying to think outside the box because I'm seeing potential problems in the future with, with, with cuts and the police reform.
Reenie?
Yes.
May I ask a question to our moderator, Robert Floyd?
Yes.
Okay, Robert Floyd.
Hi, Robert. If we were able to
A big word.
I know, and, and, and we're so used to the budget being the way it is, but if we were able to segregate police wages and communication wages kind of like a subtotal, but to the right of that. but to the right of that have a general wage account that combined the two out to the right, would we be able to vote or pull that out as that total amount? But leave those two subcategories there that would be reported on that add up to that total? Able to?
He's still muted.
Hang on. There, now he's unmuted.
Okay. I missed a part of that presentation. I went offline. My connection, it appears, so I have to ask you to repeat.
Sure, if, if we were to make two two subaccounts, basically police, police wages and communication wages. But kind of make them, shall we say, subaccounts. And to the right of that have a total of those two kicked out into the categories with all the other accounts where they're voted on. Would we be able to vote basically on that total of the two accounts combined together, but report on them separately? Rather than voting on them as two separate dollar amounts. And my thought process on that, if that's done as a subcategory, is then the reporting and the deficit spending would only occur when those two line items in total would actually exceed the total about that was of the two that was voted on.
Wow, that's some question.
Yeah, that's a big question.
And you're talking about on the, on the budget itself is the line items?
Right, exactly.
Well, I haven't seen any red flags go up. It sounds viable. I do admit it's a lot of information to process to give you an answer right now. But I don't, I don't have an immediate objection to it.
Okay, thank you.
But Ed, isn't that, doesn't that doing what he's doing now? When all is said and done, you're still maintaining two line items.
It does, but it gives him the more flexibility. And I don't, I'll, I'll, I'll give you the example that other communities use that I don't want to go there yet because I know it would scare the heck out of everybody, but you know, theoretically, you could you know, do all the wages in the you know, highway department under, you could list them out, or you could list the expense accounts in the highway department, but and then have them add up, but the item that's actually listed out on the right-hand side that is voted on is a total of those three, four, or five line items. And that gives the department had the ability, they can't exceed deficit wise, the basically the total that was voted on, but it gives them the, their flexibility as a management person to say, oh geez, I'm, I'm over in this particular account, but under that, as long as they come under the same category, it's the deficit is done by the total of those categories. So just another, another thought about how to accomplish what Ian's looking for, but still being able to get the reporting pieces out on them separately.
Any final comments, questions?
Can I ask Ken a question?
Sure.
Ken, what's your thoughts?
My thoughts on aggregating the two? Is that your question, Robert?
I think he's
Ken, what are your thoughts on?
On aggregating or what Ed just said about having separate, separate like clusters?
Is that your question, Robert? Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, I, from my standpoint, audit trails have always, you know, necessitated, I think probably looking at the two line items, but I can understand, I can also understand the chief's perspective of simplification. But, you know, in my former business, audit always prevailed.
Well.
I don't know if that helps you at all, but that's I think that's looking at it strictly from a financial side.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments on this proposed article or any article for that matter? We're not approving them tonight. We're going, we're just reviewing them. I think there's some that are not within our purview. The finance committee has to chime in on what, you know, their support for them. Is there anything that you want to do as business right now, Ken? Or do you want to hold off until we the select board approves the ones that are under our purview and have you do the same at that time?
Yes.
Or separately, okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, I did have another question, and I'm not familiar with this. It's the only reason I'm asking. How does the, how does the wage increase for the town clerk and treasurer collector work? How does that process work? Somebody has submitted a request to move salary to a certain number and then that's, that goes out to the town?
Yeah, I'll ask, I'll ask Ed to address that. It's a citizen petition.
It's a citizen's petition. We have to put it on in the same form and the same verbiage. We can't change anything that the petition came in. So I will follow up further on what you're asking for probably about in the day. Ken?
Okay, thank you.
So one question I have, and we don't have to answer it right now, is that if, you know, we just, you know, we're going to present the balanced budget to the town. And then if there is a request to increase that, how does that get reconciled? If the voters approve that particular article?
Robert has his hand up, I think.
Okay, Robert, are you still unmuted? Yeah, okay.
Yes, I am. I'm good, I'm good to go. Robert Floyd, a citizen's petition does not mandate the select board for the action the town meeting decides with their vote.
What do you mean?
Well, basically, if the town votes yea on any citizen's petition, you're not mandated to salute and do it. You meet the next meeting and you discuss it. And if you want to take it as a suggestion for action, you have that right.
Okay, so it's an advisement type of a situation?
Ignore and take any.
Okay, does it pass at a majority or two thirds? Is it?
Majority. Majority.
Okay, so.
Yes, citizens paint the town hall yellow and everybody votes unanimously and you say no and it goes away.
Oh. Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Not mandated by a citizen's petition.
Okay, thank you, Robert, for clarifying that. Ken?
Yes. My understanding is that there are certain officers whose salary is set by the town citizens. Is that correct?
It's, it's set by a in, in the on the town meeting warrant.
Right, so how?
What?
How does that amount change? In other words, if, just say if somebody's
As I said earlier, I'll follow up with this with you tomorrow, Ken.
Okay.
Okay, more, more to come on that. But you know, the painting of the town hall yellow actually sounds you know, Pelham, ever see the building in Pelham? It's actually really nice.
Still got time to get an article in.
Just kidding. All right. Anything else on the articles or the operating budget?
All right. No, just, just one thing, Reenie, we, we kind of hope that we might have something to report back on the envelope study of the old town hall. If there were going to be some costs there and nothing's come back in, we don't have the report back yet from the engineer that was looking at it. So I think we'll forego anything for right now.
Okay.
I, I, I think looking at the agenda that you don't need the finance committee any longer.
Oh, yes, we do.
What's that?
Yes, we do. Do you mind hanging on for one more thing that necessary business that can't wait until the next regular select board meeting?
Oh, so there's something else. Okay, sorry.
And by the way, the next select board meeting is actually Thursday at six o'clock.
Right.
So one of the first, first item is the conservation commission has been going back and forth with a resident from Strong Road.
Ed, Matt, Matt is muted. Sorry.
Oh, that's for the tree. Okay.
Okay.
Don't we have a meeting tomorrow?
No, it's canceled.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they need a little bit more time for the department heads to work on the numbers. So anyway, there is a resident who's gone back and forth, has a house at the bottom of Strong Road, intersection of East Street. Their property borders the Manhan Sanctuary Hazel Young Conservation Area. There are three trees that are in danger of falling on their property house particularly. And so they had an estimate down and the short story is it's a five thousand dollar bill that they receive for an estimate from Tree, Tree Place. And so the question is they're requesting funding for removal of the three trees. The only question I didn't get is and maybe chief, you can explain this. The question was, does this include police detail? And what I heard was that J, J and E, who did the estimate would submit it to the police, but does that include it in the five thousand or is that addition to?
I believe it's an addition to. I can't say for certain. I, I actually spoke with Marla, I believe it was yesterday. And I asked her to reach out to, to the tree company to have them contact me to see if we can the tree company apparently said that they're going to use, have to use a crane and they'll be swinging the trees into the road. So we're going to see if we can arrange it where when they're swinging them in the road, they could just call and perhaps have a police officer that's on duty be out there for fifteen, twenty minutes when they're doing that and then, and then, and then leave. That's what the hope, hopeful aspect is here.
Yeah, and Reenie, just a clarification, I got a note from Marla right as before the meeting. And from her perspective, the five thousand did include the, the police detail, so.
So, okay, so the question is they have approved this to happen pending the approval of the select board. We don't have a particular funding source. I don't know if that's something in the tree warden thing went from eight thousand up to fifteen, but that's for just the incredibly large number of tree work that's required over the course of a year. So Ed, or do you have any suggestion on this, Ed? In terms of funding source?
I'm not the money tree. I'm sorry to tell you that.
I know, I'm just asking if you had a suggestion.
I'm sorry, is there any way that our insurance would cover anything that's preventative? As opposed to the liability we're exposed to in the event that it does happen?
Our what?
I doubt it.
Our insurance.
Do you know any insurance that does prevent?
No.
No.
No, I, I, I think it needs to be taken care of, number one. Number two is I have no idea where we'd find five thousand dollars. You know, other than maybe the conservation budget as it is.
Conservation budget's five thousand dollars.
It's five thousand dollars. It wipes out the whole.
It's not going to happen.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a town property. I mean, conservation is managing it, but it's town property. So we've got to figure that out. I think I, I think that, you know, unfortunately, their house is very close to the, the border of the Manhan Sanctuary there, and that is where the microburst went through last, a couple of years ago. So that whole area is kind of problematic and their, their house is unfortunately very close to that borderline.
And all the money that's been achieved through the grants for the trails and for management of that property, that is not obviously included in that. That's, that's not about the trails, it's not about the bridge, it's separate.
Yeah.
Correct.
All right, Francine?
I was just thinking, is there any way by a stretch of the imagination, community preservation could do anything?
Community preservation.
Preservation out of their undesignated account. No.
I don't know. I have no idea.
No, you can ask.
Ed, is there any way that you can, that it can be put off until July first or after?
I don't think so. There's actually, there's actually a date already that they have earmarked and usually it would take a much longer period of time to get on someone's calendar. And they are making themselves available earlier on.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or be, and how about being moved after July first? I mean, the, it's
We can't, we can't do that if the work's done now. And we've, if we have been notified, they have used a certified arborist, so now, now we're just playing with the roulette wheel. I mean, if nothing happens, we're okay, but if something did happen, we'd be liable for any damage to that home.
Yeah, and with all the terrible storm, the winds we've had over the last couple of weeks, I, you know, I wouldn't want to put it off too long, frankly.
Just an op.
Yeah, you never know what another one's going to pop up.
What's the balance in the, in the tree warden line?
Four hundred dollars, and I would tell you normally that that is not the account to look for for this. The tree wardens expenses for trees are for trees in the public way, not on public, public property. Or town-owned property. And this, and this is one of the areas where as the town looks to acquire more open space, that guess what? We really need to account for maintenance dollars for that open space.
Well, there's been a lot of money achieved in the town in the last couple of years towards open space and it's a high priority based on the voters. So but, so yeah, you just have to deal with this when it comes up. Any other suggestions?
Is free, anything out of free cash?
That would still be subject to the vote of, town meeting vote.
That takes too long. All right.
Do you know what the current balance is in the conservation commission line?
Hang on, I had my report from a couple of weeks ago. From their five thousand dollar line.
And didn't they also just get some money for the forestry work, the, and they're evolving also? They also got some funds in for because of the forestry work.
From Pomari Mountain, yes. But I'm not sure the restrictions on using that.
Revolving fund and see if the funds are reserved from it for the particular property that was forested or if it's eligible for any of conservation management pieces or properties. But that might
Why don't we, why don't we just look into this? Why don't we, why don't we just look into this? Because it seems like that would be if either they're anything left in their budget. We know one of the articles in the town meeting is to look at their revolving limits. And we have to use what's available now and, you know, provide additional funding from some source at town meeting. To replace or at least increase any of those revolving numbers, that might be a way to have it happen sooner rather than later.
Yeah, and I can I can take a look at the. Accounts, I I really don't. I think it's gonna be a very tight year, uh, you know, especially especially with some snow and ice overages. Uh, but I can I can take a look and see if anything sticks out.
Okay, well, let's revisit this on Thursday then, because they do have a date where the work could be done, and it is, I mean, it would be a huge liability. If um this uh injured anybody.
Does that include disposal? Can they just sell them and and for now?
That's one of the things that they had asked, and I don't know why they said no, but that seems like a very logical thing, just let them land in the on the on the property.
Yeah, I don't.
Chris, can you swing back to Marla about that?
Sure, yeah, I don't think they were planning on carting them away that I recall. I thought it was just to leave them on the property, but then there was this notion about. Swinging them out and taking them taking them away, and I'm not quite sure what happened on that.
I got the impression with my conversation, it had something to do with the removal as well, but there may have been a reason why they had to remove them. I just don't know specifically.
Yeah.
I I'll go back, I'll go back and look, but my memory and I can't remember if it was. Via phone conversation or not, that I thought the reason was that they had to be removed was because actually the direction they're hanging or leaning is. Oh, over the butter's property and over their house.
Yeah, I.
Couldn't couldn't just be felled and.
Yeah.
Drop that back in. The town property.
That sounds right, Ed. I think I think that is true, that the just the direction, the way they are leaning is, it's not the normal, just cut it down and let it go. Um, it's it's leaning really right toward the house, so there's no way to kind of let it fall gently, I think.
So Chris, would you mind just checking to see if any um or between Ed and you can check and see whether or not um anything from result revolving fund, anything from the forestry work, anything from the existing Concom budget? And also whether or not that is in fact true, that they can't just let it fall on the property? And then Ed, if you can see if there's any money that you think can be freed up towards this, and then we'll put on the agenda for next Thursday.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, yeah, I'm not sure on the, you know, the money from the forestry work. I think some of that was restricted to, you know, trail work and things like that. I I think it had some. Some uh parameters on it, but I'll check with Marla on that.
Yeah, that was a that was an article that was passed um.
Right.
Two years ago at town meeting.
Exactly.
The next item, I don't know if that this is something that requires uh some input from the finance committee, but it was the Franklin County um. Franklin Regional Council of Governments Highway Paving Bids Issue. Is that something that we would like to request some finance committee involvement in, Ed?
I don't, I don't really. Think it needs them. It's just basically that uh they have changed their methodology, so. Previously, when they would go out to bid on certain projects, uh, all it required was. The information from the highway superintendent and, you know, whether it's. Basically ceiling cracks of how many, you know, feet of crack ceiling they'd want, or if it was uh paving uh roads of how many feet of uh. Pavement uh of of overlay or full full depth reclamation. Uh, but now they have changed their uh policy and to be able to. Uh, be able to bid in certain categories only um for communities. Each of those communities has to designate uh an authorized signee. Uh, and it has to be designated either by the select board in a town or a mayor in a uh city. Um, so that they know who the authorized signee is and have their signature on record. Uh, so that's where we are in this particular case. Whether the select board uh wanted to designate either myself or Randall Kemp as that designate to sign. Either either one works in this case, but because of the fact we just got this yesterday and they need it back by May 10th, it needs fairly quick action. And I did uh include the uh. The email from Fur Cog and uh the paperwork that would have to be uh filled out for the offer is authorization of that's signatory uh in your packets.
Is the highway department the only one that um for like shared services? Is that the only um department that? Takes advantage of the um. Franklin Regional Council Government's um purchasing?
Uh, so far.
Okay. Would someone like to? Make a motion to, or anybody have any questions? You want to make a motion to a. A point, Ed or Randall? To sign off on these? Or do you have questions of Ed? Nobody's talking.
I'll move to authorize Ed to sign.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further questions, discussion? All in favor?
Bishop and I.
Falls I.
Rule and I.
And Grodenine. Uh, we just have a few more items, but I didn't know if, Ken, if you you were interested as a finance committee of signing off, you had mentioned that. Previously, did you want me to stop and allow you to just close out your meeting or?
Sure, I would entertain a.
You're welcome to stay the whole time. That much more.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sounds like Mary's approving uh the emotion. She's muted, but she's, I heard.
I can find her. Where are you?
And and Rachel. Rachel and Barbara.
Rachel and Barbara.
Mary should be unmuted.
I move that we adjourn.
Oops, is there a second?
Yeah, Mary and then Barbara.
Barbara seconded. All right.
Imagine you're all.
Roll call.
Uh, Barbara's raising her hand in absence of um, okay, and then Rachel and Mary.
Mary and Cole.
Listen, thank you all very much. It's, you know, it's painful as this is, it's um wonderful to have you all be a part of that with us, and I want to thank Matt again for all of your expertise with uh Excel and all that. Um, so we'll do it again Thursday.
All right.
Thank you.
Good night. Good night.
We don't have license permits, but we do have warrants.
Yep, um, let's see. We have three warrants, I believe. We have um. A vendor warrant, W 2143, in the amount of $205,309.36. You have a payroll warrant, 2144. In the amount of $302,620, sorry, $302,629. And a payroll deduction warrant, 2144, PD PD 2144. Fifty-two, four oh nine and forty-seven cents.
Any questions?
No, can't read my own writing, sorry.
So we have the details of that. Um, any questions? Um, I don't believe we have any documents with signature. Uh, any questions on the pending items? You know, on the article that had to do with the uh Greenway, uh, right now, there's a. Twenty, 270,000 borrowing debt exclusion. Ed, I think at one point you had said you were gonna look into something about that, you had an idea about something about that. Is there anything else you wanted to say about that, or you want to wait until after the meeting tomorrow?
Uh. Why don't we wait till Thursday night?
Okay. Alrighty. Then we have meetings. Uh, the next one is Thursday night. And. The next one after that would typically be the 18th. So, and then. If we stick with the current format. We would be next up on June 1. Do people want to at least commit to those dates? Or do you want to wait on any of them?
I'm fine going ahead with them.
Yeah, that's fine.
I just wanted to remind everybody that um Jim Seni, who is the chair of the housing committee, um is arranging for a presentation on the 18th of May. The speaker was not available, so we agreed on the June 1, and she is asking for a later than six o'clock time. So I'll be working back and forth with Jim about that, and I'll be giving you the information for when it gets closer. Uh, but it is a presentation on the housing trust. And Jim also asked me to mention that there are two positions available on the housing committee, housing, South Hampton Housing Committee, so if you know anybody who would be interested. He'd be uh very interested in you sending names his way. Okay, then we're up to open time for the public. The select board reserves a portion of its meeting for public comment and encourages participation. Any comments from the public? Maybe. If you can just unmute Tammy.
Sure. Oops, she just switched positions on me. There.
Uh, Tammy Walunas, 298 College Highway. I have been asked by several people if you have heard any more about that. Town property being named after someone without you guys approving it.
What I will say is that um. Francine, who is chair on the bylaws committee, did pass along a bylaw that came from another town on naming properties, because right now. We do not have a bylaw, I don't believe, uh, on naming of properties. Um, I don't know if Ed or Francine, if you ever heard one way or another about whether or not um. They have the Parks Committee Commission has the sort of jurisdiction to name property after somebody, if it's in the in the park? Or is that supposed to be ultimately a town meeting vote or a select board vote?
Honestly. Go ahead, Ed.
Doesn't have to be a town meeting vote. And I would, I would say. Depending on how the title of the property uh goes, it may fall on. The Parks Commission, or it may fall on uh the select board and other particular instances. It could fall on Conservation Commission. Just, you know, or a school committee. Uh, so I just. It just really depends on what basically. The deed to that property may say.
Well, this is town property.
Right, I was gonna say, it's Conan Park, and it's town owned, and now it's named after.
A ball field, I believe, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think that naming, it's been, you know, something that's, you know, like I said, but last time on the school committee. I had been trying to push forward the idea that we have a policy about it, so that it doesn't happen somewhat whimsical. And you have to be very careful when you name things after people. You don't have all the details that you need to know sometimes when you do this, and I'm not talking about this particular circumstance, I'm talking in general. So ideally, we have a bylaw that we follow as a town. I don't know if this is something that uh KP could chime in on about our our current situation and, you know. Does a school get to name anything in the school after this, after somebody that they make their own policy as elected body like?
Hampshire does, Hampshire Regional School Committee does.
Right. That's what I was talking about. I I wanted them to develop a policy when I was in the school committee for naming things after people. And they went ahead and said, okay, we'll do that, but first let's name this field after this person. So they went ahead and said, I want to go ahead and do this and and before we create a naming thing, and I don't even know if they even ever created a naming thing. But they went ahead and then named it after Mr. Derunder af- you know, they wanted to go ahead and do this probably before he retired. And then they said, well, we'll do that later, and I wanted it to happen the other way around. Um, so what do you think is the next step? I do think, I I appreciate your reason, the question, Tim, and I think that we should sort of get an understanding. Whether, you know, should we create a bylaw for this? Who has the right to decide um the naming of buildings and property and fields and whatever?
Yeah, well, what did you find out, Francine, from your your research?
Well, I I found that in in this particular community that uh the name, the naming, renaming, or any designation. Um, was done by vote, a majority vote at an annual town meeting. That no public building or public land shall be named for any living person. Or shall bear the name of any commercial enterprise. There's some, you know, they have some raised some very good points, they have some night good procedures in place. Uh, that could be modified or customized to the town based on, you know, our preferences, but. It 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 provides a pretty good um framework, I think, for us to for us to be considering. How we how we would want to go about something like this. And to your question about uh whether or not the Parks Commission, they may have bylaws. Or charter something affiliated with the Parks Commission that we've never seen, because they're not all we're working on are the general town bylaws. So uh, something may exist and. Or we can get clarification, you know, from from the attorneys in the absence of having anything in place, Ed.
Right.
It'd be a good idea to maybe explore the the idea of creating a bylaw, though. I mean, I'm sure this is not the first situation that we'll have, so.
Right, we already have a request for a bridge in town to be named after a person, and I think we should have some guidance. Will this ECO 360 bylaw program, will that actually provide bylaws that we can adopt as a community? And might there be something, and if the voters agree to this as an article, would, is that gonna be like a um a whole online version of uh bylaws?
Yeah, but I think they would have to be things that we would propose and we would have to agree to. I mean, they make sure that the language is right, that it's compliant and consistent with.
Yeah.
Rather, you know, regulations.
Yeah, we can, we can take some language from other towns' bylaws, Rennie, to to sort of create our own, but.
I'm just wondering if that's what this would do. Would it provide a uh dictionary of bylaws of sorts that we could adopt as a community? That already has a language uh that we could take or adjust?
Well, that that's where I got this. I went to a town that I knew that D 360.
Okay.
That law and and, you know, modified it slightly. I sent it to you into, um, we're gonna, our bylaw committee is meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
Take a look at it.
I have a question.
Sure.
And I have a feeling that Conan Park has probably been Conan Park for a long enough time that I'm not gonna ask it about that, but. How did Labrie Field get its name?
It was because the Labrie family sold it to the town.
Okay, so did that go in front of town meeting, or was that done by the Park Commission, or was it done by the select board, or how?
I don't remember.
It's part of the contract with the agreement of buying it.
Yeah.
For that price, it was in there in the actual contract. With the with the people selling it. They sold it for a price. They sold it for a price and the condition that it was named Labrie Field.
Yes.
Park Commission deciding that they wanted to name a field after a previous employee. And I'm not saying I agree or disagree, I don't have an opinion about it. I just want to make sure that we have guidance, because naming, I think, you know, should be done in a, you know, thought-out way, I think. Based on what we agree are good practices to follow. So if you can check in with Mark Reed a little bit and get some history on that, Ed, or if you want me to do that, I'm happy to do that, and if you can just run it by, yeah, run it by KP and ask them what their opinion is about that, about naming public property buildings, fields, after people, who has the say? Does it go to town meeting? Is it the elected body that oversees that property? I'd be very interested in knowing that.
Ed, I'll, I'll forward you this draft that I forwarded to Rini. Okay?
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Alright, Tammy, anything else?
Well, it just says Hampshire, as, um, the historical society president, we ask everybody to please avoid Clark Chapman House. Please don't be walking around it.
Yeah.
Going down there. We need people to stay out of there right now.
Now, people are ac- actively doing work there, right?
Ye- off and on, yes.
Yeah, I just saw someone yesterday there, uh, doing some work, I think.
Well, the curator is there, and she's doing, um, outside work right now, because it's not safe to be inside the barn and, um, the carriage house. Um, hopefully, the foundation guys are gonna come back.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Yep.
We did have a couple of correspondents. I don't know, they were directed a little bit to the select board, but, uh, there was, um, uh, a woman that had written about, talk about trees again, about trees that were leaning on her property, and the good news is that the owner, did make arrangements to actually, um, take the tree down. Jim Palermo wrote a very articulate letter to us, um, uh, voicing a lot of frustration about the uh, funding process, um, of the school. And I think it's basically talks a lot about what we've been dealing with, and I'd like to just read it. First, I'd like to thank the members of the select board for the excellent work you are doing and to assure you that I am not in the least bit critical of your efforts. Having watched the sausage making that is enti- entailed in the budget process, it seems to me that Southampton is in an uninten- untenable position. There is too little juice to squeeze from the orange. Therefore, additional revenues must be secured, and the town needs to restructure in operations. With regards to more revenue, much of the town's financial problems stem from the schools, and more specifically from the school's inability to absorb the cost of unfunded mandates and insufficient reimbursements from the state. It is town, time for towns to revolt. So he followed up this letter with a, uh, separate email, which he forwarded to us, that he sent to State Rep Sabadosa. It is also, in my opinion, a time to assess whether systematic changes can be made in town government. Are there services that can be discontinued, consolidated, or shared with other communities? Needless to say, I am suggesting some controversial areas that warrant consideration. Can the town afford to maintain separate police and fire departments, or can we share with West Hampton, the state police, or East Hampton? Can we afford an independent health department? Or can we contract with East Hampton, for example? I do not pretend to have the answers to these questions, but I know that middle-class homeowners have cause to be concerned about their property taxes, and the town cannot afford to spend more than the revenue it connect, collects. Again, I thank you for your amazing work and great dedication to the town. Best wishes, Jim Palermo. So that's more or less what we're right smack in the middle of. Uh, were there any other correspondences that you're aware of, Ed? I think those are the ones that, oh, there was one that came in about the lines in the street. But still, I'm just blown away of, did they actually, the, some, uh, that actually came into the, I think, the highway department. Uh, that, uh, and you said that the lines, uh, for the street painting are happening on Line Street, um, coming up in the next couple of months?
Well, what, uh, what Randall was originally part of the plan for the, this next, whether you call it construction or paving season, was actually paving, uh, with an overlay that portion of Line Street. So, uh, part of that would be, once it was paved, that, um, the lines would be painted also.
Okay, and that came in from the East Hampton DPW to our town. Um, any other updates, any other correspondences that we should talk about?
Not that I have seen.
Okay, we don't have an executive session. Does anybody have anything else you want to say before we close?
No, I just, I'll be glad to work with it and see if we can figure out anything on the Concom issue or the tree issue, because I just don't see where we're gonna gonna find it. I don't think the forestry money was intended to be used for, for this kind of thing. The purpose for doing that was to get trail maintenance and open up the trails to more than just people that live next door kind of thing, so I don't I don't know that that's there, and then the revolving funds have usually been more for educational purposes, you know, rather than this, you know?
There are two revolving funds in Concom. One of them is the new one that was established for the forestry work that can be then turned around into use for the trails, and the other one was, um, for the general business of the Conservation Commission. But if there's creative ways to utilize any existing funds that are immediately available, and then once, you know, um, it could be in, you know, a way to restore some funds to tho- those revolving accounts. I don't really know. I'm just saying that we're talking about immediate need versus future need.
Yeah. Well.
See what you can find out, and then we'll come back to it on Thursday, okay?
Okay.
Anything else? Would you like to make a motion to adjourn then?
Yeah, and I'll second that.
Okay, so Francine and then Chris.
Sure.
Um, all in favor?
Falls I.
Roll and a.
And Grodenine.
Yep.
Uh, thanks, everybody. We'll see you on Thursday then.
Yep.
Good night, Robert.
Yep. Night.